So, next item of business is to read, read us out of a closed session. Ms. McGill, do you have the motion?
I do. Move that the city council members certified by recorded vote, that's the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion, convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
For a second?
Second.
Second, moved and seconded, Ms. Thomas, would you take the vote? You're muted, or for whatever reason, not coming through.
No. How about now?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't change a thing, but.
Gremlins.
Counselor McGill, yes. Counselor Payne?
That was a yes.
I could see. Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Smoot?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade? Vice Mayor Wade?
He gave a thumbs up.
Yes.
Maybe it's the storm.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, there we go. All right, motion passes five oh. So having established that we have a quorum again, we will begin the business meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Counselors, any announcements?
I just wanted to make just a brief statement about the, the crisis that's going on in Ukraine. I've had many constituents to reach out to me to see what, what we could do as a statement or something, and I think that what we can do now, if you, the type to pray, please pray and, and we can, you know, I think that we're doing as a nation, what we can do at this point, I know is an ongoing crisis and, and that that it's really sad that a country's being invaded by another one during this time. So I just asked that we continue to hold the Ukrainians and our prayers and our thoughts, and I know that we as a nation will continue to keep our attention to what's going on over there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, well said.
Thank you. And I would add, it is likely that sometime fairly soon in the next month or so, we're going to be beginning to see refugees. Charlottesville is a place where a lot of refugees come. We've got the International Rescue Committee, a lot of other folks who know that Charlottesville is hospitable to refugees and to immigrants. And when, when the opportunity presents itself, I know that Charlottesville and Charlottesvilleans will, will be generous and welcoming. We'll now hear from Dr. Denise Bonds, Health Director for the Blue Ridge Health District. Dr. Bonds?
Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm happy to be here tonight to give you another update on where we are with COVID. I am going to share my screen here. So hopefully you can all see my screen. Yep, good, okay. So where we are tonight is, too far here, sorry. Here we go. So we had 24 new cases reported today. You can see by the graph that we are on a strong downswing from our peak in early January, late December from the Omicron. So overall downward trend, we still are seeing spikes occasionally, and I will say that Mondays tend to be a really low case count day because of the weekend. So we'll probably see a little bit of a bump up tomorrow. That's been the pattern so far. I know that many of you watch very carefully and hear on the news about the CDC. The CDC has recently changed its community levels, and I want to spend a few minutes talking about this and where these levels come from. Because I think people may be worried a little bit because Albemarle and the city of Charlottesville show as a very high indicator. So you can see the map here, CDC has now lowered it down to three levels, low, medium, and high. You can see in Virginia right now, most of Northern Virginia and the Tidewater Eastern Shore area has actually moved into the low area with most of the southwest tail in the high area here in Charlottesville. And when you look, it's called Charlottesville City County. We are listed in the high, so the recommendations are to wear a mask indoors. Make sure you're up to date with your COVID vaccines, and remember that might include a, does include a booster. And to get tested if you have symptoms. Let me explain how they come up with these numbers, because I think it's a little disheartening. We have such high vaccination levels for us to be at such a high, to be listed as a high community level. And so what I've done here is pull the data that went behind here. So there are three components that go into making the new CDC COVID-19 community levels. The first thing that they look at is the number of cases per hundred thousand. Hundred thousand is used, they normalize that value because all counties and communities across the nation have vastly different population levels. And so this is a way for them to be able to come up with one metric for all areas. And I've just pulled here all of the localities for the Blue Ridge Health District, and you can see Charlottesville City is down here at the bottom. Right now there are 224 cases per 100,000 individuals. And this is a seven day average that they look at. So this was last updated on last Thursday, March the third. So when, once you have that data, and it is available on the CDC website, although I confess you have to dig a little bit to get it. You, you either put yourself in the fewer than 200 or the more than 200 per cases per 100,000. And the rationale behind this is that cases per 100,000 is a leading indicator. That is, if you have a high caseload, that's an indication that you might have a high burden to your hospitals. And that's what the other two metrics that go into this really look at is burden on the hospital. And they're looking at two indicators. They're looking at the COVID inpatient bed utilization, and they're looking at COVID hospital admissions per 100,000 population. Now you'll notice it says here health services area, and they all say Albemarle. And that's because they're getting this information, the bed utilization and the hospital admissions per 100,000. And they're using that for the entire service area. They do not break that out for individual localities. The reason behind that is that a hospital is what is called a regional asset. That means, if you think about it, UVA admits individuals from all over the area, not just Charlottesville, and the same for Centerra Martha Jefferson. And so all of our localities are in the same health services area, but there are also a lot of other localities that are part of the Albemarle area, health service area. So Culpeper is also considered part of that area, Madison, Rappahannock, Buckingham County, a whole slew go into that that are not necessarily, certainly not in Charlottesville, and not necessarily part of the Blue Ridge Health District. Now, if you look down at the community levels, there are two different numbers depending on if you're in the 200 or more, or fewer than 200. So here, if you have fewer than 200, this 6.8 actually puts you down here in the low, sorry, in the percent of inpatient beds and the percent hospitalized. And the 15.1 puts you in the median, and the CDC will assign whatever is the higher category. So for all of the other localities in our health district, except Albemarle and Charlottesville, where they have cases that are below 200 for 100,000, they would use this, and you, if you look at the map, they are all in the medium risk category. But because both Albemarle and Charlottesville are slightly higher than the 200 or more, that changes the numbers that we use, or the cutoffs for medium and high. So now that 6.8% is in the median range, here it was in the low, and the 15.1 puts Charlottesville and Albemarle up here in the high range. And again, the CDC is going to assign whatever is the highest risk value to the community based on that. So at this point in time, VDH is examining and trying to really understand the implications of this and how it might affect our community. It's certainly one more piece of data. It is certainly a very convenient way to help individuals decide what they should do on a day-to-day basis. But you can see just small numbers, particularly in communities that have small populations, where each individual case of COVID counts for a lot more when you are rounding up or adjusting to per 100K can have pretty dramatic changes. So should we proceed with that? I can foresee that at least for the next few weeks, both Charlottesville and Albemarle might bounce between medium and high. And that's a little confusing for individuals. And so, as I said, VDH is still examining this to try and parse out what it's going to mean for the community. So I wanted you all to understand, because when you look at that, it, it looks very distressing to see both Charlottesville and Albemarle in the high area. I do want to just take a look at the hospitalization numbers. This is Centerra polled this morning. They are reporting five individuals with COVID in, in their hospital beds right now. And you can see they've had a gradual trend since early January downward. And here we have UVAs, and they have also begun to show a gradual trend. Still a pretty high number of people hospitalized, 47 yesterday were reported with three admissions yesterday. And you can see that even though they've had this gradual trend, these lines here represent days when they've had really high admissions. So still pretty concerning, but definitely heading in the right direction with regards to our hospital utilization. I showed you this graph last time, showing you again, we're pretty much all Omicron variant at this point in time. The Delta variant has really dramatically fallen off here and really been taken over by Omicron. We're not reporting here any of the subtle Omicron, the B2A, but we have had one or two cases in the region, but so far doesn't seem to be making a big impact on us. So again, vaccination is really the most important thing to do to keep yourself safe. We continue to have a very slow but steady increase in the number of individuals that are getting vaccinated. So you can see there's been about 300 additional people since the last time I talked who have started on their vaccination, gotten at least one dose. So that's great to see, and we're happy to provide that vaccine for free for anyone who wants it. Pretty good percentage of the population, and really an excellent percentage of the population for adults who have at least one dose. And we're seeing increases in the number of people who are fully vaccinated. That is, they not only started to get that vaccine, but are getting their second and their booster shot. So 69% of the population is fully vaccinated for adults, it's 73. That difference is, remember, this is first dose, and this is getting all of your doses. And we've had about 50% of adults that have gone ahead and gotten their booster dose. And I really am highly encouraging everyone, if you have not gotten your booster, to please do that. It's really important to have that additional shot to have full immunity. Just a reminder that vaccination save lives, where we see higher vaccination rates, we see lower death rates, and that's that decreasing line here. Here's the percentage of people who are vaccinated, here's the desk for 1,000, and you can see in our community and for the greater state, it really is a very sharp decline as vaccinations increase. So when you're out and about, keep yourself safe, get vaccinated, upgrade your mask. And I am strongly encouraging people to continue to wear a mask indoors. Even though we are on the bubble there of the CDC guidelines, we are still seeing case, a pretty significant number of cases in our community. Remember about distance and outdoors, and of course, wash your hands. So we are no longer calling every case of COVID, nor are we doing contact tracing. So I think it's important to remind people what to do if they come down, if they get self-tested, or if they go to their physician and get tested, and they get diagnosed with COVID. So if you're infected, the important thing to do is isolate for at least five days. Continue that isolation longer if your symptoms are more than mild, or if you have a continued fever. On day six through 10, individuals can leave isolation if they're improving, but they need to wear a mask because there's a chance that they may still be infectious. We've actually done some really interesting research even here locally, that has shown that people do convert well beyond five days, it's a small percentage, but we do see people converting and becoming positive. So people are infectious after that five days. If you have an opportunity to do a self-test, an antigen test, that can be helpful, and if it's positive, of course, stay in isolation. If you find out that you're exposed either through an online app, or because someone tells you, then you need to quarantine. If you're fully vaccinated and you've had your booster, then the recommendations are that you just wear a well-fitting mask while you're around others for 10 days. If you've had COVID within the last 90 days, you have very strong immunity. And again, you don't need to quarantine if you're exposed again after you've recovered. But if you're not vaccinated, or if you haven't had your booster, then you need to quarantine for five days, wear a well-fitting mask. And then finally, we really recommend that if you do know that you're exposed, to get tested five days after exposure, or when symptoms develop. Testing locations, I'm not going to read through all of these, these are really the same as they've been, except that our community testing center at the Pan Top Shopping Center will be closing on March 15. That's really going to be the last day at that point in time. Remember, they're at Pan Top Shopping Center, they're open from 9 to 5:30. There will still be other opportunities to get testing. We do have rapid tests that we can either provide at the health department, or they're available at pharmacies and grocery stores everywhere. So still lots of testing available, but the community testing location will be closing on March the 15th. And then in regards to vaccination, again, we're vaccinating at every health department in the afternoon, and you can see where we're at here. We still do Moby on the mall. On Mondays, we were there today, and actually had a lot of people stop by to get their booster, their first vaccine, so that's great to see. Our community vaccination center at Seminole Square will be closing on March the 12th, that is its last day. So if you have not gotten your booster, now's a really great time to go over there. They can do walk-ins, they're very fast, very efficient. Really encouraging people to use that resource while it's available, but they will be closing their doors on March the 12th. So if you've been putting it off, now's the day to do it. And I'll just leave with our hotline number, and of course, vaccines.gov. There are other places besides Blue Ridge Health District to get your vaccines, they're available at pharmacies and physician offices everywhere. So I'll stop sharing, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counselors, have any questions for Dr. Bonds? Well, I've got one. Dr. Bonds, you had sent an email to Ashley Marshall back on February 14th, which got copied to us through another cycle, another circle, just today, commenting on the kinds of factors that you recommend we consider when deciding whether to go back to in-person meetings. That's basically the last thing on our agenda, and to do you the favor of letting you opine early rather than asking you that you hang around and tell us what you think when the topic comes up. Could I ask you to, to talk a little bit about the kinds of data metrics that, that you think perhaps we should be looking at in deciding when to go back into in-person meetings?
Yeah, so, you know, that's a really great question. I think right now all of the trends are very favorable. Our case count is still a little high, but it is trending downward. Our hospital capacity is strong at this point in time, and the number of people being admitted with COVID is low. I think things to consider are, will the meeting only be in person, or will you do a hybrid form? Because it is still quite risky for some individuals who have immune compromise, who can't get vaccinated for whatever reason, or have been vaccinated and are just not mounting a small, a strong immune response. It's really critical that those individuals still have the opportunity that they've had over the last two years with Zoom meetings to participate. So that would be one consideration. I, I think another consideration would be whether or not you would require masks during the meeting. City Council chambers in the past has been quite crowded, and a lot of people want to show up and, and voice their opinion about particular matters. We know that a well-fitting mask really reduces the risk. Certainly, if it were possible to hold council meetings in a larger or more open space, that would allow that distancing that we know helps reduce the risk of infection. So metrics that I might look at, I would look, I probably wouldn't use a daily case count for a couple of reasons. One, it tends to fluctuate a lot. I think instead I would look at weekly case counts over time, and I would want to see those trending down. I would want to see that our hospital capacity is very strong, that they have minimal number of COVID cases hospitalized, so that would an outbreak happen, that that would not risk a strain on our hospital systems. I, I think those are the, the factors. I probably wouldn't look at percent positivity. There are so many people who are using rapid tests and home tests now, that you really just don't know what that means anymore. So I, I don't think that that's a great metric to use at this point in time. And I, I actually think the CDC metrics are very reasonable metrics. I, I'm just worried that the focus, the division of case count between 200, greater or less, when you're bouncing around that 200 mark, that can result in a lot of oscillations between medium and high, or low and medium, which could be very confusing. But that's, I think, certainly as long as you understand those limitations and can look at the data behind those recommendations to see what's going on, I think that might be a very reasonable and easy metric to look at. You know, it, it's a, it's a challenge to make that determination. And I'm not sure that there's one specific thing. I think it's looking at the total of where we are and where we're moving with COVID.
And of course, one other advantage is that we get to hear from you once a month, and you can update us a month from now and tell us if, if things have changed for the positive.
I am always happy to come in and talk about anything to City Council, but I'm happy to give you an update on that. And certainly, you know, at VDH, we're having lots of meetings about these new CDC metrics. And there are going to be some changes. If you've looked at the VDH website, there's a lot of headers that say that the data will be changing that how it's presented and the type of data. And I'll certainly keep you apprised as those changes happen. I think you want to give lots of notice and advance warning as you go back to in-person, so that people can plan accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have other questions for Dr. Bonds? All right, thank you, Dr. Bonds. Appreciate you stopping by, even virtually. Okay, next item on our agenda is recognitions and proclamations. Let's see, what have we got here? So we actually have four on the agenda. We're going to talk about a fifth one as well. Vice Mayor made, Vice Mayor Wade, you want to start us off with the March 3rd Freedom and Liberation Day resolution?
Yes, thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor. This is a proclamation that I read last week at UVA where they had a program at the mail, and this proclamation that this city council did approximately five years ago to recognize the day of liberation. I'm just going to kind of highlight some of the points that it made, and and it was some pass recognized that March 3rd is Liberation Day in Charlottesville, where the more than half of the population of Charlottesville and the counties of Albemarle during the time of the Civil War was enslaved. And that this fact was little known until the work of the Charlottesville Blue Ribbon Commission on memorials and public spaces, which promote, promoted the, this knowledge to, to the public. And that 14,000 members of the community have struggled for generations and banished, began to see, to be freed on March 3rd, 1865, on the arrival of Union forces under the command of Generals Custer and Sheridan, who enforced the 1863 Emancipation Proclamation. And, and so this is a, a holiday for the city of Charlottesville, and it was signed February the 6th, 2017 by Vice Mayor Wes Felony. Thank you.
And it's still a holiday in Charlottesville.
Yes.
Thank you. Next resolution, resolution concerning the Festival of the Book, 2022 Virginia Festival of the Book. Whereas the city of Charlottesville believes that literacy is critical to active and engaged citizenship, and is committed to promoting reading, writing, and storytelling for all, both within and outside its borders. And whereas reading stimulates the creative and intellectual growth of individuals, while also building community through shared experiences, discourse, and understanding. And whereas the 2021 Virginia Festival of the Book is a hybrid event with events presented locally and through online platforms. This is, actually, we should have made this a 2022 Virginia Festival of the Book. We'll be drawing attendees and attention to Charlottesville from around the globe, while providing all programs free of charge to attendees and offering great accessibility through closed captions, recap videos, and transcripts. Whereas Virginia Humanities, the Virginia Center for the Book, University of Virginia, local businesses and schools, and cultural and civic organizations collaborate with the Virginia Festival of the Book to explore the world through reading, to foster empathy for the stories of others, and to promote literacy for all. Now therefore, we proclaim Wednesday, March 16th through Sunday, March 20th, 2022, to be the 28th Annual Virginia Festival of the Book, and encourage community members to participate fully in the wide range of available programs and activities, signed and sealed the 7th day of March 2022. And we have someone from the Festival of the Book who has joined us here.
Yes, Jane, hello, the director. Hello, and thank you all. We are thrilled to be able to present our first ever hybrid 2022 Virginia Festival of the Book and our 28th Annual Festival. We greatly appreciate the support of the city of Charlottesville, and we invite everyone to participate this March. Just to follow on the report you just received, in order to provide safe access for all, we've listed COVID policies according to each in-person venue. So we encourage everyone to check the precautions listed for each event at va book.org. Meeting people where they are, the 2022 Festival presents 75 events, 74 of which are free in all genres for all ages. Each of these events allows you to hear directly from the author, however you or they choose to participate. But we are also thrilled to once again welcome attendees from all over the country to visit our community. So we appreciate your support. We thank you for this proclamation, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you. We thank you for this proclamation, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
And councilors, have any questions for Ms. Kulo?
Thanks very much.
And let me just say that I every year I've I've involved, I've involved myself in the activities of the Virginia Festival of the Book. It's just a wonderful addition to our community. And it, of course, it we're still a little adjusting to the notion of bringing people to Charlottesville for the occasion. But over the years, it's brought a lot of people to Charlottesville uh for the occasion and people have have come away with a great experience and we're looking forward to inching back into that this year and maybe next year full bore.
You bet. Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, the next proclamation, Women's History Month. Uh, Counselor McGill.
Thank you, Mayor. Women's History Month twenty twenty-two. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of Charlottesville in countless recorded and unreported ways. And whereas women play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life in Charlottesville and whereas particularly important in the establishment of early charitable anthropic and cultural institutions in our city, women have served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionists, emancipation, industrial labor, civil rights, environmental, and peace movements, which have created a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women has consistently been overlooked and undervalued and the literature, leadership, teaching, and study of American history. And it is therefore fitting that we recognize their numerous accomplishments. And whereas the twenty twenty-two theme of the National Women's History Month is women providing healing, promoting hope. Women providing healing, comma, promoting hope. A recognition of the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic and a recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history. And whereas the city of Charlottesville reaffirms this commitment to uplifting and safeguarding women's rights, women's rightful place in our history and in our society. Now, therefore, Mayor Lloyd Snook, the third of the city of Charlottesville, on behalf of the city of Charlottesville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March twenty twenty-two in Charlottesville is Women's History Month.
Thank you. Any comments? Any other councilors wish to make a comment on Women's History Month proclamation? Okay, moving right along. The proclamation for the March for Meals Month. This is sort of an interesting one. Uh, whereas on March twenty-second nineteen seventy-two, President Richard Nixon signed into law an amendment to the Older Americans Act of nineteen sixty-five that established a national nutrition program for seniors sixty years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals campaign in March two thousand and two to recognize the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered, and to raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas the twenty twenty-two observance of March for Meals provides an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. Whereas Meals on Wheels program has served the Charlottesville Almarl community admirably for forty-four years, serving three hundred twenty-two homebound citizens and delivering sixty-six thousand seven hundred twenty home-delivered meals in twenty twenty-one. Whereas Meals on Wheels volunteers are the backbone of the program, not only delivering nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also bringing caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels of Charlottesville Almarl provides nutritious meals to seniors that help them maintain their health and independence, preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and or premature institutionalizations. Whereas Meals on Wheels of Charlottesville Almarl provides a powerful opportunity for social connection for million, millions of seniors. Well, I'm not sure that Charlottesville Almarl is for millions of seniors, let's say thousands of seniors, hundreds of seniors, to help combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels of Charlottesville Almarl deserves recognition for the heroic contributions and essential services they have provided amid the COVID nineteen pandemic and will continue to provide to local communities, our state, and our nation long after it is over. Now, therefore, we do hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-two as the first annual March for Meals Month in Charlottesville and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National twenty twenty-two March for Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America, signed and sealed the seventh day of March twenty twenty-two. Uh, Robin Goldstein, I see you're there, or would you like to provide a couple of comments?
Sure. I just want to say thank you very much for for reading the proclamation. That was really long. I really appreciate that. Um, I would also like to say that, you know, this is a a month where we're just letting, getting the word out so that people understand more about our seniors in need, folks who can't get to the food banks and and other places. And basically, we would, we wanted to put the word out to anyone who's interested in in volunteering. We would love to see more community members join us and 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 helping get the food out to our seniors who who need it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, colorectal, oh, does anybody else have a comment? Okay, colorectal cancer awareness month. Mr. Pinkston.
Thank you, sir. Colorectal, colorectal cancer awareness month, March twenty twenty-two, whereas colorectal cancer is the second leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States among men and women combined. And whereas colorectal cancer is one of the few cancers that can be prevented with timely screening, but one in three eligible Americans are not up to date on screening. Whereas colorectal cancer is expected to become the number one cancer killer for those ages twenty to forty-nine by twenty thirty. Whereas in Charlottesville, colorectal, colorectal cancer disproportionately impacts people of color with African-American people being one point four times more likely than white people to be diagnosed with colorectal cancer. Whereas in Charlottesville, African-American people are two point three times more likely to die from colorectal cancer than white people. Whereas the National Cancer Institute estimates that there could be as many as four thousand five hundred additional colorectal cancer deaths because of the drop in screening due to COVID nineteen. Whereas the national goal established by the National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable is to strive to increase timely colorectal cancer screening rates to eighty percent in every community for all Americans eligible for screening. Whereas observing a colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March would provide a special opportunity to increase awareness and offer education on the importance of early detection and screening of colorectal cancer. Now, therefore, I J. Lloyd Snook, Mayor of the city of Charlottesville, do hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-two as colorectal cancer awareness month in Charlottesville, signed and sealed this seventh day of March twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. And we have a representative from the UVA Cancer Center with us.
Yes, uh, my name is Tom Lockren. I'm the director of the Cancer Center. Um, and I'd like to thank Mayor Snook and council members for claiming the month of March colorectal cancer awareness month. So, uh, we recently became the fifty-second designated comprehensive cancer center in the entire country in the history of fifty years of NCI's war against cancer. So as being an NCI designated comprehensive cancer center, our uh main goal is prevent cancer disparities. You've already heard the statistics about the disproportionate effect of colorectal cancer and people of color just here in Charlottesville. And like to emphasize the proclamation's point about prevention and screening because uh the best way of preventing or fighting cancer is prevented from ever occurring. Unfortunately, uh, colorectal cancer is often diagnosed late and is therefore less curable. It's a very curable disease caught early. Best way of doing that is by screening. Screening has been lower to age forty-five from age fifty for a number of reasons. Uh, we're committed at the Cancer Center to work with the community to increase colorectal cancer screening rates and then hopefully conquer the problem of colorectal cancer for the future. Again, thanks so much for making this proclamation on our behalf and for all the residents of Charlottesville.
Thank you, Dr. Lockren. Any additional items for recognition, councilors? Okay, Ms. Thomas, will you read the consent agenda for us, please?
Consent agenda. Number two minutes, January twenty-sixth, council retreat. February second, joint budget work session with schools. Three, resolution appropriating funding of six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to a new collective bargaining project account within the city's capital projects fund. Second reading. Four, ordinance, amending and reordaining Chapter Nine elections. Section nine dash thirty-one, Central Absentee Voter District, to change the location of the Central Absentee Voter Precinct from City Hall to City Space. First of two readings, and the second reading will be in May twenty twenty-two. Um, I was told that there are some other things that will need to happen in between now and then. Number five, resolution, Historic Resources Committee Status Report on Memorialization.
Thank you. We will now take public comment regarding items on the consent agenda just read by the clerk. This is not the time, if you signed up in advance to talk about other things on the agenda, this is not your time. This is only to talk about those four items we just had read to us. Each speaker will have up to three minutes in the Zoom webinar. You can select the raise hand option to be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined by phone and wish to speak on the consent agenda, you may press star nine. And Mr. Dill Hunt, I'll turn this part over to you to see if there's anybody interested.
Looks like Bill Golding has his hand raised. Bill, you have three minutes with counsel.
Hi, guys. Um, I actually wrote it out so that I wouldn't be pedantic and I'll be quick for you. Uh, my name is Bill Goldine, for those who are listening, and I am both a Charlottesville resident and a proud school bus driver for the city schools. Uh, I'm a supporter of a union for the school bus drivers or CAT employees as a whole because I actually work under CAT. Um, I want to thank you guys, the council, for your recent actions that you have taken to finally move forward on collective bargaining eligibility for all city employees. And I'm encouraged to hear that a plan will be put forward in the near future. Uh, I'm asking you to vote yes for the funding allocated for getting the collective bargaining system off the ground. I would also like to make sure that the council provides funding in the upcoming budget for all necessary positions to carry out the new system for collective bargaining. This will ensure timely implementation, which will benefit everyone. Transit drivers and other essential uh city employees deserve to have the right to join a union and have collective bargaining. And I again applaud the city council for doing the right thing and moving forward on this critical issue. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next raised hand is David Conan. You have three minutes. You're on with counsel.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is David Conan. I'm a Charlottesville city resident, a teacher in our city's public schools, and a co-chair of the organizing committee for our educators' union. I'm here tonight in solidarity with the workers of the Amalgamated Transit Union, IAFF, and other public employees of the city of Charlottesville. I first want to thank the members of this council for allocating funds to begin the process of enacting a collective bargaining ordinance for our city's public employees. I also urge you to engage with these public servants throughout the process of writing and enacting an ordinance that is fair to all parties. Do not do this in a unilateral manner. The principle of collective bargaining, which is a fundamental right of all workers, according to the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, means that employees have a seat at the table and meet with their employer as equals to negotiate the terms of their employment. You should respect that right and that principle throughout this process, beginning with the first step of negotiating the terms of the ordinance itself. The second point I would like to make this evening has to do with the broader rights of our city's people and how those relate to the priorities of this council. I've heard a great deal of rhetoric recently that as a city, we need to choose from among the school reconfiguration project and affordable housing program and collective bargaining for our public employees. But these are not options from which we can pick and choose. They are all fundamental human rights. The people of Charlottesville have a right to affordable housing. Our public school students have a right to quality facilities throughout their academic career. And our workers have a right to join together and bargain collectively with their employers. When it comes to collective bargaining, it is not even clear that there will be any appreciable monetary cost to the city. It literally costs you nothing to acknowledge our public servants' rights and sit down at the negotiating table with them as equals. Regardless of the potential cost of any of these programs, though, actualizing the rights of all members of our community should be central to this council's work. We can have a community that is livable for all, where the human rights of residents and workers are respected. Your job is to make that happen, not to pit these essential priorities against each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Broder. David, you're on with counsel.
Great, thank you very much. Um, good evening, members of Charlottesville City Council. My name is David Broder and I'm proud to serve as the president of SEIU Virginia five twelve, a union of frontline public service workers throughout Northern Virginia and in Richmond uh and home care workers throughout the Commonwealth, including here in Charlottesville. I'm here standing in solidarity tonight with my ATU union siblings and IFF union siblings to testify in support of funding a meaningful collective bargaining process for city workers. By giving workers a seat at the table, meaningful collective bargaining benefits everyone in the community. It raises wages, it improves benefits for all workers while closing racial and gender pay gaps. It improves recruitment, retention, and morale, and thus enhances the quality of services for local residents. It protects worker health and safety, which has never been more important. A recent study found that during the pandemic, nursing homes where workers unionized and bargained a contract had thirty percent fewer deaths among residents and employees than in nursing homes without unions and collective bargaining. That is an extraordinary statistic that we cannot ignore. For all of these reasons and more, it's no surprise that in a Wason Center poll at a Christopher Newport University, fully sixty-eight percent of Virginians support the right of public employees to form a union and collectively bargain. I can only imagine that number is even higher in Charlottesville. To ensure that Charlottesville city workers have meaningful collective bargaining and to ensure that the community benefits fully from the advantages of collective bargaining, the final ordinance should include bargaining over the full scope of pay, benefits, and working conditions, the freedom for workers to talk about and organize their union, and binding arbitration to ensure a contract is negotiated and reached in good faith. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight in support of ensuring a real voice for working families on the job and in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Broder. Anyone else?
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands raised.
All right, um, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Okay. We have a motion uh from, is that a second, Mr. Payne? Or somebody seconded, I hope.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Michael seconded.
Great. Uh, any further questions or comments from council? Ms. Thomas, call her all.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five nothing to adopt the consent agenda. City manager report, is there a report from the city manager's office?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I wanted to
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I wanted to share with the council that we are beginning uh the process of conducting a employee satisfaction survey. Uh, the city had done these surveys uh in the past. The last one was done in two thousand seventeen. I think that it's time that we uh get a sense of uh how employees are feeling about their their work here and and uh use that uh feedback to construct the program that will move us forward uh so that we could address issues uh that we identify. Uh, secondly, we are beginning, uh, we had a kickoff meeting for our compensation study. Uh, and it looks like it's going to take about nine months for that detail work to uh to occur. But those are two uh projects in addition to, of course, the collective bargaining that we are working on. Ashley, anything else you want to say about uh either of those items?
Um, yes, sir. I just wanted to provide the council with a little information about the scope of the class and comprehensive study as well as the timeline. Um, where the scope of the study will look at um a comprehensive evaluation of every job within the city to determine its relative worth worth within the organization for internal equity and for the establishment of pay ranges and step progressions within those ranges. The team will review current job classifications, confirm and recommend changes to hierarchical order of jobs. They will establish appropriate benchmarking standards and conduct salary surveys as needed for similar positions, identify potential pay compression issues and provide potential solutions as well as analyze and recommend changes to the present compensation structure uh structure. A work group of staff, including our human resources team and our interim director of communications, as well as one of our deputy city attorneys along with myself, will be spearheading this work. It will be done in four phases, and the consultants expect that a full report will be available at the end of phase four, which is estimated to take nine to ten months.
Did you have any additional items?
Uh, yes, sir. I did have one additional item to report out to the community and the council. Um. We are also uh looking at um some key uh jobs that are being filled currently. Um, the city is making great progress on some key hires. Interviews are underway for our director of communications and public engagement. And yes, that title does sound a little different because we are going to emphasize public engagements within our uh communications professional team. Resumes are being reviewed for the director of human services and director of information technology roles. And resumes are being reviewed as well as being still collected for the director of human resources role as that advertisement is continuous. We expect to move forward to interview phases on all three of those last director positions shortly. Um, the city has received a high number of very qualified candidates for all the roles mentioned. But I would like to take a quick moment to sincerely thank the team members who stepped up to lead these departments in the interim. Uh, David Dillon Hunt as our interim deputy director of communications and public engagement. Misty Graves as our interim director of human services, and Steve Hawkes as our interim director for information technology. Their willingness to uh serve has ensured the stability of service provision through their leadership for all of those departments. And that ends my part of the report, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, Deputy City Manager Saunders, you had some items to report.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council, and uh and to the public, just have a few things. Um, couple of things that I wanted to start with are announcements from the Parks and Rec Department. Um, Parks and Rec will be hosting um a Bennett's Village event um at Penn Park uh on the fifteenth of March. And there'll be two online meetings on the first at one P M. At six P M. The park staff will actually be present in the park on the fourteenth from nine until five uh with an uh explanation of the proposal and to gather some public input. So there's an opportunity to take a look at what the Bennett's Village project is going to look like as an inclusive playground. In addition, they're also announcing um a public session for Benjamin Tosler Park, two online public meetings uh to also gather and collect input on the construction of a field house and the parking lot expansion has been proposed for Tosler. Um, park staff will be in the in the park from ten A M. Till two P M. On Monday, March twenty-first, also to gather input from the public. And then there's those uh sessions from one and one o'clock and six P M. On March twenty-second. Beyond that, I wanted to take a moment just to give a update on three community priorities that have been uh hot issues and have been the genesis of a variety of emails, as you all have been reading uh from the public. So just want to kind of give the public an update as to where we stand on uh Fifth Street uh as the first. Uh, the internal working group continues to work. We met with the consultant group today. Uh, we are integrating two public meetings into this uh short five-month study process to take a look at alternative solutions for Fifth Street. And at the same time that we're doing that, we're going to continue to be working with TJPDC and VDOT on aligning this project that we're proposing with what they are doing uh from Harris Street out into the county. Um, I did give staff authorization to pursue a smart scale application uh because it is time for us to consider if we should go after another round of funding. Uh, we decided to go after a smart scale grant from VDOT to focus it on Fifth Street, adding to what we've already been able to secure. And that will give us the ability to look at a more longer term solution that may be one of the more costly versions. But the idea, as I indicated in prior conversations with the public and with you all, is that our goal is to look for uh short term as well as long term options, inexpensive as well as expensive, uh non-controversial as well as controversial. Our goal is to make sure that we put everything on the table as relates to what we can do on the Fifth Street corridor. Uh, the second area is affordable housing. Just to give you an update as to where we stand, this is more of a uh a preview to a four o'clock work session that has been scheduled for April fourth. The thought there is that we have a lot of different things happening right now in the affordable housing space from an internal perspective. And the goal would be to update council and the public as to where we are. Uh, the CAF round, uh, the current CAF round just concluded. Uh, the committee has just recently met, and they're in the process of making selections on what recommendations they want to make to council for the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's that is available. Those recommendations will come to you on the twenty-first. We also have opened uh the part two to the CDBG round uh, which is open until March fifteenth. And that will be to uh reallocate the two hundred and forty thousand dollar balance of funds that were uh resulting from the defunding of the uh Franklin Street project. So that is a new amount of funding that's available for proposals to come in. And we anticipate projects to start July first after we get through that review process. We also have a five-year action plan kickoff later this month with TJ TJ PDC. That'll be the HUD five-year action plan, where we'll be identifying what the various priorities are in the affordable housing space and make sure that it's a comprehensive proposal. So there'll be opportunities for the public to engage, and there'll be more updates to come. And then we're going to continue to work on the implementation priorities. Um, just to give you a highlight of that, we're looking at how to track better, how to look at uh tracking the long term and uh the long-term uh inventory assessments that we've been making, uh, making sure that we're getting return on those investments. Want to take a look at how the hack uh meetings are scheduled so that there might be additional opportunities to focus on breaking down into smaller groups and take a look at some specific issues. And then to really focus on the structural elements of the plan. And then the last, um, and this is more of just one of those tougher type moments where we have to admit that we can do better. Um, there's been a lot of conversation in regards to the um stuck nature of our climate action plan. And just want to be upfront with uh everyone and acknowledge that we know that there's work to be done there and and really to focus on that, we have decided to have a work session on the eighteenth of April. The goal will be for staff who've been working diligently in this space uh to actually come before you and present to you and update as to what it is that they've been working on, uh, seek some guidance on things that may have been stuck as we have, acknowledging the fact that there have been significant impacts from COVID pandemic and organizational staffing changes that have prevented them from even moving as they would have originally planned. Our goal would be to try to get back on track. So this will be a moment to just kind of reboot that effort. Uh, and the the point of that would be just to make sure that everyone is in agreement in the right approach that we're taking. And then we can take a look at some of the comments that have come in from the recent letter that we received from our friends in the climate space. We want to make sure that we acknowledge that we hear them. We understand that they would like to be a part of the work that gets done, and we will reboot our efforts to ensure that we integrate them into that conversation. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, that concludes the report from the office of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And let me say, I I'm really delighted that we're moving forward on a number of things that have been sort of stuck for a while and the things such as the employment satisfaction, employee satisfaction survey, the comp study, things that relate to our workforce. We know that one of the challenges that we've had in the last year or two has been that we've had people, very good people leaving for other jobs that either they felt that there were more advancement opportunities elsewhere or better pay elsewhere. Uh, and one of the constraints that we've had has been frankly that we have not been able to to keep a lot of our uh really, you know, the the people that we trained up, the people we got got uh to where they were good in their jobs, and then they get good in their jobs and go someplace else. So these are improvements. Um, I'm really glad that this is moving forward. The comp study is something that we actually had authorized back in twenty twenty, but then with COVID, it it wound up getting pushed to the side. Uh, it's time to get that rolling and progress on a bunch of other things as well. Counselors, have any other thoughts?
Yeah, I just wanted to second what the mayor said, and I really appreciate these updates on climate and housing. And then I wanted to just second what Deputy City Manager Marshall said about uh the folks in the organization who've stepped up in an interim role to serve in these roles, very grateful, and the community is very grateful for their work. So thank, thank you. Um, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't think we can overlook the role that um the city managers, Marshall and Saunders played in, you know, just keeping us afloat for, you know, several months there when, um, you know, without a a city manager and, you know, staff vacancies, um, just we're really thankful for just the leadership and support and dedication we've received from lots of staff. So you are appreciated. Thank you.
Agreed. Okay, time now for community matters. There are eight pre-registered speakers, leaving eight slots for additional speakers on community matters. If one of the first eight speakers is unavailable, someone on the waitlist can be moved into that spot. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. There will be an additional public comment section at the end of the meeting. Uh, and we will now open the floor to pre-registered speakers. Others wishing to speak may select the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar to be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined by phone and wish to speak during community matters, you may press star nine. Is our first speaker available? I've got Chris Meyer as the first one on on the list. But Mr. Dill Hunt, I'll leave that to you to manage.
Yes, you're joining us now as a panelist.
Great.
Uh, good evening, counselors and city staff. Uh, I'd like to add my thanks to the staffers who have stepped up and uh interim positions, the director, and it is important to have those directors positions filled. I'm also happy to hear that uh they're getting some interviews and they're going to be hiring soon. Uh, my main push, though, today is we are in budget season. Uh, you, for me, talk a lot about uh reconfiguration funding uh and affordable housing funding. My request is that you fully fund those budgets that uh, you know, were presented today. Uh, I did see the seventy-five million dollars for reconfiguration was in the budget that was presented today, and again, I want to see that funded. Uh, starting it with, though, I'd like to remind the counselors, at least three of you, were part of the council discussions last October with the school board and the design firm that unanimously approved an indicative budget amount of seventy-five million dollars to move forward with. Uh, the reconfiguration, including the remodel of Buford, will not be a luxury, but rather will ensure our middle schoolers aren't trying to learn in cave-like classrooms, and teachers won't have to leave the classroom to open the bathroom door because there is no bathroom in their wing on campus. Uh, these were all issues brought up in an excellent series of articles. I'm sure you read this in the last couple of days in the Daily Progress. I want to thank city staff and also the counselors who went toward Buford. Uh, I think Dr. Gurley, the superintendent, said it best, that reconfiguration is less about funding a luxury building, more about funding an equitable building. Uh, I would also, um, sorry, I lost my place here. Regarding affordable housing, I couldn't add up all the amounts, but it seems like you're closing in on the ten million dollar affordable housing budget, that goal that was part of the affordable housing plan and that council unanimously endorsed last uh year. Uh, affordable housing is also a necessity for a community's residents. Please make sure this happens. Finally, I would suggest council strongly consider a raise in the real estate tax despite the increase in assessments. Ten cents is probably not necessarily because of the assessments went up so much, but borrowing less now for some of the capital improvements will make the future projects more affordable. I was happy to see the proposal in the new budget also to raise the maximum amount of income to qualify for real estate tax rate from fifty-five thousand to sixty thousand dollars. Thank you for your time, and I wish you a productive meeting. Thank you. Next up is Emily Dreyfus. Emily, you have three minutes with city council.
Thank you. My name is Emily Dreyfus, and I'm here on behalf of the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition. We urge you to improve housing opportunities. We all benefit from good schools, especially improvements in academic and support services, but deeply affordable housing must be an ongoing priority. Charlottesville needs at least ten million dollars per year to remedy the injustice of our local affordable housing crisis. We need enough funding that the city will have flexibility to respond to both opportunities and urgent needs. Local funding opens up millions of dollars of federal and state funding. It's a smart investment and one that is urgently needed. For the past fifteen years, the city's real estate tax rate has been lower than it was between nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and six. It is currently lower than the national average. We need additional resources to make meaningful progress on housing, a key racial equity need. Perhaps the city's pathways fund could provide assistance to homeowners who don't qualify for local relief programs but who are hit harder than they can afford with the real estate tax increase. Click's top two recommendations are to fully fund the affordable housing plan and to pay a robust tax increases with maximum tax and rent relief for very low-income people. Now I would like to share a comment from a Click member. My name is Valerie, and I was born and raised in Charlottesville. I lived here until moving to the valley last year. I am for affordable housing and school reconfiguration. I support Click's recommendations. First, families should not have to choose between affordable housing and adequate school facilities for their children. I'm confused as to how some people are looking at not supporting funding for housing, especially when the amount needed to fulfill the affordable housing plan is drastically less than the request for school improvements. We need funding for both. The effects of childhood trauma create created from unstable households manifest in classrooms every day, creating affordable housing opportunities will allow for children who have suffered from housing insecurity to come to school as their full selves. But what is the point of a child attending school as their full self if the facilities are inadequate to support all students? To not fund school reconfiguration tells the children who attend Charlottesville city schools that they are not worth the investment. The students who benefit the most from the affordable housing investment will also benefit the most from school reconfiguration. It is not fair to pit these two concerns against each other when the same population stands to lose and gain the most from these decisions. I was still in Charlottesville city schools when they began this conversation, and now I have a child of my own approaching middle school age. It blows my mind that the schools have still not been updated. I believe there is a creative solution for this dilemma, and I hope that the counselors who were voted in to think creatively and in the best interest of the community can figure out how to fund both initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dreyfus.
Our next speaker is Leah Purrier. Leah, you're on with counsel.
I am here this evening to request a two hundred thousand dollar annual appropriation for the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center. A precedent has already been set for this type of request. Currently, council has a five hundred thousand dollar lease value for McGuffey and a one hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and forty-four thousand dollar lease value for the Discovery Museum. This annual appropriation recognizes the significance of the Heritage Center to the community and beyond. It further allows us to meet the mission of provo promoting a greater appreciation for understanding of the contributions African Americans and people of the African diaspora locally, nationally, and globally. And it will allow us to accomplish programs that are reflective of the vision of our center and not having to and not having to raise funds. Secondly, I would like to say council needs to also fund the reconfiguration request. In 2011, the cost was 32 million. In 2018, it was 55 million. And now today, in 2022, it's 75 million. This is an average rate of inflation at 4%. How much longer can we kick this can down the road? In 1988, the decision was made to have an upper elementary and middle school in hopes of creating equity and diversity. It has done the exact opposite. We must not kick this can any further. It's time to act. Research shows the negative impact of crumbling buildings on education. Each of you has seen Beaufort and know we're not building a luxury school at the expense of academics. We're upgrading a school to improve academics. The time is now to begin reconfiguration.
Thank you, Ms. Purrier.
Garrett Trent is the next name on the list, but I do not see Garrett in the list of attendees. So Garrett, if you can hear me now, feel free to hop on and we will bring you into the meeting. Elizabeth Breeden will be our next speaker. Elizabeth, you have three minutes.
Thank you. This is a request to include in the budget the lease value of Jefferson School African American Heritage Center. We are asking for the city council to commit to supporting the Heritage Center as an essentially important organization of our city, equally as valuable as McGuffey Art Center, the Virginia Discovery Museum, and the Albemarle Charlottesville Historical Society, who are supported in the budget each year. We are requesting that the city cover the lease of $200,000 a year in order to assure with government support that the Heritage Center can continue to exist. After August 12th, 2017, the first place we gathered was the Heritage Center to talk about what happened, why it happened in our town, and to decide what we are going to do about it. We cannot know what to do unless we know who we are and we include everyone in the conversation, especially those most influenced by our actions. We are, after all, a town which was 52% black in 1865 and is now 13% black. Where did everyone go? You might think that it's an easy answer, but it is not just about black folks leaving for better opportunities. It is also about white flight into our town. The Heritage Center is not just a voice informing us of our history, although it does that. Where else would we hear about the amazing words of Isabella Gibbons, the first black teacher hired to teach at the Jefferson School? How would we know that John West, her son, was the largest landowner in Charlottesville in the 1870s? Where else would we see Jordi Yeager's research on redlining, deeds, covenants, and zoning to see how our council assured that there were segregated neighborhoods and that the services provided in those neighborhoods, like sewer water and street paving, were substandard? Don't we need to know this to discuss modern zoning and affordable housing? And we need to learn more about the Piedmont Industrial Land Company, the reason there are so many black-owned homes along Ninth Street, along Ridge, and in Rose Hill. Assuring that the city of Charlottesville guarantees this lease is a statement of what we value.
Thank you, Ms. Breeden.
David Koenig is the next name on the list and he spoke earlier on collective bargaining. I don't see him in the list of attendees either. So I will move now to Susan Cruz. You are next to speak. Susan, you have three minutes with council.
Hello, good evening. This is Susan Cruz, the Executive Director of the Community Climate Collaborative. And I'm here tonight because the impacts of climate change are mounting and we're not moving quickly enough to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, according to the latest report from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, which was released early last week. I encourage council to review it. To quote the co-chair of the working group, "Any further delay in concerted global action will miss a brief and rapidly closing window to secure a livable future." Though the report is global in scope, it emphasizes the critical role that cities play in mitigating climate change. So how are we doing here? There is certainly progress to celebrate. Albemarle County set ambitious climate goals, released countywide and reassessed countywide greenhouse gas emissions, passed Phase One of its Climate Action Plan, and is now actively working on its implementation, including increasing funding for energy efficiency programs, advancing solar on schools, and adding micro-transit services. The broader community has also answered the call. 16 locally headquartered businesses and C3's Green Business Alliance have committed to reducing their collective emissions by 45% by 2025. 20 nonprofit and for-profit organizations are working together to advocate for accessible clean transportation, a critical component of reaching carbon neutrality, and hundreds of households have taken action to increase energy efficiency, electrified transportation, and add solar energy. So what about Charlottesville? Well, first, out of the gate to set a strong greenhouse gas reduction goal, the city of Charlottesville has fallen far behind. This July will mark three years since Charlottesville set its sights on climate leadership. Three years and we still have no Climate Action Plan. The city hasn't assessed its actual greenhouse gas emissions in four years and the window to reduce emissions to prevent catastrophic impacts is rapidly closing. To its credit, Charlottesville continues to fund energy efficiency programs and is researching the community's vulnerability. But unfortunately, efforts to develop the component of its Climate Action Plan that is centered on reducing emissions seem to be stuck in perpetual stall with no clear timeline for commencements or completion. Rapidly reducing emissions should be our number one climate priority. Every year of inaction contributes to the acceleration of global warming, ignores science, abdicates our responsibility to vulnerable populations worldwide, and undermines global security. I was glad to learn tonight that the community will get an update in April about the status of the Climate Action Plan. We need a deadline for completion. If current resources are not enough to complete the plan, it's time for council to bring in some outside help. Right now, we're not doing enough.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz.
Next up is Mariah Wilkins. Mariah, you're on with council.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Mariah Wilkins. I am a housing attorney at the Legal Aid Justice Center. And part of my role is that I assist the rent relief program and our rent relief assisters, as well as advocate and represent subsidized housing residents and public housing residents. In assisting the rent relief program, I see the incredible need of residents in Charlottesville as we have been able to secure over a million dollars in rent relief in our, in Charlottesville within our small team alone and continue to get hundreds of calls and messages from the community. It indicates the ongoing need, ongoing need in the community due to the increasing rental costs compounded by the COVID-19 pandemic. This trend is indicative of like the continued, of the continued need, especially as the rent relief program phases out into the, into the summer and fall. Additionally, when it comes to voucher holders and those that are in subsidized housing, I've only been a housing attorney in Charlottesville since September. And I frequently have clients and, and residents and individuals and families that have, that have vouchers that are facing displacement due to being unable to attach their voucher and due to limited options that coincide with the subsidy provided with their vouchers and also property owners hiking up ranch, which also threatens displacement. So with that said, urge all of you to find creative ways to fund the affordable housing plan fully so that we can kind of hedge the issues that might come along with continued market rate rises as well as the after effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Stark. Elizabeth, you have three minutes with city council.
Hey, councilors, I'm not actually able to speak right now, but thank you.
Okay.
Next up, we have Whitney Richardson. Whitney, you have three minutes with city council.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Whitney Richardson from Dark Skies Bright Kids, a primarily volunteer-run program seeking to enhance science education in Virginia elementary schools, primarily in underserved areas. We operate out of the University of Virginia Department of Astronomy and the program seeks to foster the natural curiosity of children in surrounding community by helping them explore the universal setting with fun, hands-on activities. We are hoping to create an interactive planet walk on the downtown mall by engraving bricks with each of the planets in the solar system. The placement of the bricks will be scaled as if the sun was only five inches in diameter and this will reach the full length of the mall. We plan, we also plan to put a QR code on the bricks for information about the planets and the solar system. We will work with the UVA A-School lasers to design and create the bricks needed. We understand that we will need to work with Parks Department for mall maintenance and the Board of Architectural Review would also need to sign off on this project.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are you, are you done? I guess so. It's an interesting project. Who's next?
All right, we still have one more name that we could use from the original eight that did not speak of those who have still not signed on though. So we'll move to, I guess, the next that have raised their hands. We have Robin Hoffman now. Robin, you have three minutes with council.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, city councilors and mayor. I'm pleased to announce that the City-County Botanical Gardens of the Piedmont team of volunteers is, are meeting every first week, first of the week Wednesdays, and then the third of the week Wednesday, 10 to 12. We met and I, this is my first time out without a mask. There were kids there. We made a circle. We're making a teepee. We were very industrious and I want to say the kids were homeschooled, so that was kind of their program. Their people are volunteers. They're wonderful retirees from the UVA. They're engineers. There are all kinds of people there and they're working really hard to make a beautiful place for everybody to get the heck out of their homes and just enjoy themselves. You can go there now. You don't have to wait till we actually start programs or whatever they're going to do. But, but I want to say is like the last five or six years, we've been through a lot of changes and a lot of people don't know their neighbors anymore. I, I kind of wanted just to say that this is like the best thing that's happened to me in, you know, for a long time. So I'm, I'm just saying that everybody try to get out there, try to find your park. Try to see if you can volunteer some hours and maybe make little gardens or something like that. Because when you're working with the community, you get to know your neighbors. You don't feel so threatened. You know, we've got like all these threatening people and Russia and this and that. I think, you know, I think that was like the best therapy for me. I think that a lot of people are very glad that Dr. Bond and, you know, Dave Dillhund and all these people are here trying to help us communicate and get the word out. But I think the community needs to step up and especially with climate actions and finding out how to compost maybe on your block, which, which I just found out is like one of the biggest problems of global warming is the methane gas from, you know, not putting your produce in landfills. So, you know, we, we have a lot of things we can do in our neighborhoods and hopefully our associations will start stepping up too and wear a mask and protect yourselves and get some mental health by going out and doing something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman.
Our next speaker is Andy Orban. Andy, you have three minutes with city council.
Good evening, council, mayor. Andy Orban, I'm a resident of Charlottesville and a parent of three city school students. I'm calling, I fully support the Beaufort reconfiguration and encourage council to follow through on their promise to fully fund the project, even if it means that taxes have to be raised. Kids are required to be in school. They don't have a choice about where they spend their time. And they're spending their, you know, six and some hours a day in this outdated building. They, you know, they are receiving a great education thanks to our wonderful teachers and staff. But it's despite the environment in these, in, at Beaufort and Walker. Middle school is already a difficult time for many kids, but it's made worse when the kids are reluctant to use the bathrooms. They're regularly locked out of different buildings because of the outdated campus configuration. And what classes, a lot of the classrooms lack exterior windows and they can just see the deterioration around them. What do we tell our kids when we keep putting off this renovation year after year? Please listen to the parents, the school board, and most of all, the kids who are attending our public schools and please fully fund this critical project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orban.
We have one hand currently raised and we have six slots that are still open right now. So if you are listening and would wish to speak in just a moment, you can press the raise hand icon, or if you're joining by phone, it's star nine. Joy Johnson, you have three minutes with city council.
Good evening. My name is Joy Johnson. I am a public housing resident and I'm also a housing advocate. Just because I live in public housing and I fight for public housing, I am also an advocate for affordable housing. Please fund the housing fund and find a way to fund the schools. I do not want to be, I don't want housing to be pitted against schooling. I don't want the school to be pitted against housing. The other day, or it might have been yesterday, I saw on the news where the Blue Is Housing Association is now saying or crying that rent has been hiked. We've been saying this now for about 20 years, that affordable housing is something that is necessary in the city of Charlottesville on vouchers. Just because someone have vouchers doesn't mean that they're going to find something affordable. Most of our folks who get a voucher cannot find housing according to the payment standard. Housing Authority, CRHA, raised their payment standard and not going to call the names of the properties, but there are some properties right now who has gone up on their rent. So even though the payment standard is up, now folks who are living there might have to move because they can no longer afford the rent. This is a problem. It's not just public housing. It's the Section 8 vouchers. So I, I strongly urge you to fund, continue to fund the housing fund. And yes, I do support education, but I don't want it to be pitted against school, housing and school be pitted against each other. I think that's all I have to say. CRHA, one more thing, CRHA has been doing something very unique in trying to put funds together to make the housing affordable. Tax credit is not going to do it. Tax credit means that a certain population of folks would not be able to rent tax credit property. So if we can't find funding to deeply, make it deeply affordable, you're going to still have a bigger crisis of affordable housing. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands raised at this time.
All right, there will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for folks who have not spoken at the beginning to speak at the end as well. So that's our final speaker for Community Matters Council. Does anybody need a quick break or should we soldier on? Okay, hearing nothing, let's keep going. Okay, first item, invite Superintendent Gurley to begin the presentation. Dr. Gurley?
Yes, good evening. Thank you all, city council, mayor. We will have a presentation of our, of our budget this evening by our board chair, Ms. Lisa Torres.
Good evening, Mayor Snook, Councilor City Manager Rogers, and staff.
Good evening, Mayor Snook, Councillor, City Manager Rogers, and staff. Dr. Gurley, Superintendent for Charlottesville City Schools. Ms. Powell, our Chief Operations Officer, and I are here this evening to present our fiscal year 2023 budget for Charlottesville City Schools. Do we have the presentation up, or the slide, the slides?
Is Ms. Powell able to share her screen? She has the presentation unless someone.
Yes, she is currently a co-host and is able to do so.
Am I, well, I selected screen sharing, David. Is it, is it not appearing? Let me try again. Hold on just a minute. Are you seeing the presentation now?
Yeah, if you can roll back one slide. And go ahead to the next one, I guess.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready. So our three strategic plan focus areas for our budget are listed here, and they are fully aligned with the school board budget priorities that drove our development process for this budget. The budget priorities are reconfiguration, focus on student programs, and staff compensation and benefits to attract and retain quality and diverse staff. Next, thank you. You're ahead of me. You're faster than I am. Charlottesville is fortunate to have many wonderful staff, teaching and leading programs for our students. Here are a few examples of state and national recognition of our Charlottesville educators. To the left here, you see pictured Ms. Cicely Shelton Barnes, who received the JMU Literacy Alumni Award. Ms. Barnes is currently our media specialist at Venable. In the middle, you see Ms. Laura Mulligan Thomas, the Director of our Charlottesville High School Orchestra, who received the 2022 Elizabeth A. H. Green School Educator Award. And to the right, you see Ms. Pamela Price Brown, who wears many hats for us here in Charlottesville City Schools, and she received the Ford Freedom Unsong Winner Award. This slide here speaks to the landscape of some of the challenges we need city council's help to successfully navigate forward. Supporting mental health. In the past two years, Charlottesville City Schools has added eleven and a half school mental health professional positions. Need, needs in this area were increasing before the pandemic, and COVID has exacerbated these needs. The next would be embracing our English language learners. Charlottesville City Schools is consistently among the most diverse systems in the nation. New English language learners embraced by the IRC here in Charlottesville continue to be enrolled within Charlottesville City Schools, and we continuously work to support these new learners. Charlottesville City Schools currently hosts students who speak 51 languages. The next area would be acceleration of learning. So we know that COVID impacted learning for all students and widened the achievement gap for disadvantaged students. The next area would be our national teacher shortage. Charlottesville is not immune to this challenge and must compete in this arena where demands exceed supply. The number of unfilled teaching positions across Virginia has spiked by nearly 62%. We will be talking, or I guess the next one would be inflation, and as recently as February of this year, the inflation rate is stated at 7.5%. And the last two areas are reconfiguration and alignment of nonrecurring federal funds with nonrecurring expenditures, and we'll be talking more specifically about reconfiguration and the funds as we go through this presentation. This thermometer graphic is what we've been using to help all stakeholders understand the current situation where nonrecurring federal relief funds had to be used to address the needs and challenges for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. As you can see, the current fiscal year 2022 adopted budget is with recurring expenditures funded using those nonrecurring or one-time revenue sources. So there are two ways to cool or decrease the dependency on those nonrecurring revenues. We can increase revenue from recurring sources, and then also we can look to decrease expenses. Ms. Powell will show you how we've been very intentional about beginning the process of eliminating our dependency on these nonrecurring funds. And we need to keep in mind that these nonrecurring funds expire in September 2024. So what this means is that we have one more year and one more budget cycle to figure this out. The budget we develop for fiscal year 2024 will need to effectively empty this thermometer. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Powell, and she will speak to our, you all about our budget in a little bit more depth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Good evening, Mayor Snook, and members of council and city officials. This slide just provides an overview of the actions that are, you know, embedded into the budget that the school board has adopted for fiscal year 2023. These highlights include a 5% average salary action for staff. This is in line with the current state budget proposal. Our health insurance did have an increase of about 10%, but it's important to bear in mind that last year we basically held it level, and we just addressed it from within health insurance fund balance. Medical inflation's been running around 5% per year leading up to 2022. So really, this is just a catch-up year in that regard. We're always looking for ways to control our healthcare costs, and so we're very proactive in that area. We had over $224,000 in reductions that staff put forward to offset $81,267 in increases for recurring and nondiscretionary contracts. So all department heads and school leaders really comb through their budgets to try to find reductions to not more than offset increases in nondiscretionary areas and contracts. The one exception to that was our, the city contracts for transportation facilities and maintenance and stormwater taxes that we pay to the city. So those increases were a little over $878,000. Our other reductions total over $980,000, so almost a million dollars in other reductions were put forward in this adopted budget, and that included the reduction of 17 positions. Minimal new funding or added expenses were included in the budget as far as operations. There were, the, the total was a little over $5,000. The school board adopted budget is based on the governor's budget proposal, the Governor Northam's budget proposal, which is, provides for an additional 1.7 million plus in state funding for next year. We're, we're happy to report that the Senate and House versions of the budget so far don't deviate from this too much. It could be around $100,000, $125,000, you know. Either proposal looks like we may lose a little bit of money, but in the scheme of things, it's not a drastic variance with what we're seeing so far out of the House and Senate. And then this budget proposal that the school board has adopted with the actions that I've reviewed for you there assumes that we will only need 2.1 million in our nonrecurring federal relief funds in order to sustain operations next year. So you'll see in the next slide how significantly that reduces the thermometer. But all of that to say, when all the work is done, the request for the city this year was based on the formula allocation increase of a little over 3.3 million. And then the increases in, we, we asked for funding to support the increases in the city contracts, so this money that we receive from the city and then send back to the city, and that totals the estimated, or the city request, it's not estimated at this point, it was $4,216,341. And I apologize, I'm not in slideshow view, because when I was in slideshow view earlier, I don't think you all could see it. So I hope these slides are large enough, because I'm just leaving it in this view. So here you see where the thermometer goes after the school board's adopted budget proposal. We do manage to drain it down to 2.1 million in nonrecurring funds still in use for operations next year. As Ms. Torres mentioned, we've got one more budget cycle to figure this out and drain the thermometer. The table in the upper right shows our, the use of our grant funds, our relief funds from the federal government. You can see that our total of all of our major awards was a little over 15.7 million. We spent over $336,000 last year in the first year that the money started coming in. This year's adopted budget projects use of about 4.5, 4.6 million, and the proposed budget for next year calls for use of 2.1 million, which would leave about 8.7 million still in federal relief funds. Again, all of these monies have to be used by September of 2024. So this is a chart showing our overall budget, and a couple of things just to point out, you see that the increase in the city appropriation based on the school board adopted budget would be 7.18%. And the other thing that kind of jumps out at you is the large increase in fund balance in federal dollars. These are both related to the big influx of relief funds that came in starting last year, and the unbudgeted and significant inflow of federal relief dollars that started in fiscal year 2021 resulted in a higher-than-normal excess of revenues over expenses with all that money coming in. So that, that overage did go into the gain-sharing agreement we have with the city, which added to the CCS fund balance, but also resulted in revenues returned to the city. This chart shows the history of city appropriations for schools. With few exceptions, the city has increased funding above the formula baseline amount and in line with the two-to-four million dollar annual funding gap that was projected in the city's 2014 Blue Ridge Commission Report, Sustainable School Funding Report. The Blue Ridge Commission Report also highlights the need for additional revenue streams, like the sales tax that so many people around Charlottesville and the state have been working to enable through legislation in the current General Assembly session. I'd like to take a moment to thank council, and specifically Mayor Snook and Vice Mayor Wade, for your advocacy efforts and support of this legislation. Please know the school board and staff are doing all we can behind the scenes as well to support passage of this legislation to enable this revenue generating tool for, for this community, for our community. This chart just shows the, it breaks down all those CARES awards and how the money came into Charlottesville City Schools. So you see here the total, again, 15.7 million, and it shows you the, the spin-down dates. And again, the last final deadline is spin-down by September 30th of 2024. This next chart, I know it has a lot of words on it, but basically the purpose is just to mainly convey to the public that if you visit charlottesvilleschools.org/covid-communications, that is our webpage where we provide our, always our up-to-date COVID mitigation health plan information, but also our planned use of the ARPA/ESR funds. Those, that information's also available and constantly updated on that website, and the public can provide comment on either the health safety plan or the uses of ARPA funds. The public can provide comment through this webpage at any time. Of course, comments always welcome at the school board meetings as well. So as we work together to move nonrecurring funds out of our operations budget and align those funds with nonrecurring expenses, the logical place to look to do that and best serve the community is nonrecurring capital expenses. It's really the only, when you have significant nonrecurring dollars to spend, as Ms. Torres mentioned in our challenges earlier, you really got to find meaningful nonrecurring expenses to put that money towards, and that is, that's construction-type projects, it's capital projects. And the use of these funds, which was on that earlier slide that had lots of words on it, it was all about, you know, safe return to in-person learning, health mitigation, recovery from academic learning loss, and social emotional supports, mental wellness. That's what the money's intended for. But understanding this need to align nonrecurring funds with nonrecurring expenditures, there is a approval process we can go through with the state to get approval to use our nonrecurring funds for, for capital projects. And we've already had initial conversations with the Department of Education to make sure we understand that process, because we hope to exercise that process. And the table on the left is just a scenario that shows, again, that total of our relief funds, what we actually spent last year, what the estimate is for this year, what's proposed for FY 2023, and then you see a $1.8 million allowance to address some technology, infrastructure, and potential carryover of need for FY '24. And in that particular scenario, which is, I don't have a crystal ball, it's just a scenario, but it's easily around 7 million that would be available to support capital projects. And so how can the school board support reconfiguration? How can we work together to support reconfiguration in a financial way? Of course, the school board can't tax. We don't have any way to generate money, but we can be wise about these federal relief dollars. And so what this chart shows, it's a list of all of the current projects in the CIP for the schools excluding reconfiguration. Reconfiguration is in the current CIP, but it's not included in this list because it can't be completed within the period of performance for these monies, which ends again September 2024. We won't be done with that construction project in that timeframe. But shifting these projects from local to federal dollars helps reconfiguration by relieving pressure on the CIP and freeing up those dollars or that debt capacity to address other needs. Please know that our team has already reached out to city facilities to do two things. One, look at the projects already completed to see if we can obtain the necessary documentation to certify that these projects were executed in compliance with all the federal requirements so that they'll be eligible for reimbursement. So these are those first three projects that are already in the rearview mirror, because they weren't bid under federal regulations. We just have to go back and see, can we get the Davis Bacon Wage certifications and things like that, so that we could request certificate, reimbursement on these three projects? The second thing is making sure that all the upcoming projects are bid with the federal compliance provisions included, and the city procurement staff certainly has experience with this as recently as the, all the HVAC work that was done with federal relief funds. That all has to meet those same regulations. So this is the last slide we have on this topic, but we do want to make you aware that we've already got in the bank, so to speak, over $800,000. It's $808,685 in grant money that was available. This is outside of that 15.7 million. This was money that was provided by the state to help with HVAC projects. And so we applied for, for that money, and we got the maximum award that Charlottesville was eligible to receive. So all of the projects you see listed here are in the current CIP or were in the, you know, in our recent CIP. There, some of them, again, have been completed, but all of these are eligible for reimbursement. And these did not have to be bid with all the same federal regulatory language in there. So this has all been approved by the state already, and this is money that will come in to relieve the CIP. So in summary, if you take everything that is HVAC related in, in the current CIP for schools, and then you take every other project in the CIP, the current CIP except reconfiguration, it's possible that all of that could be funded from federal relief funds, but there is a process involved. It takes time. We do have to get approval, but we do want to raise everyone's awareness to this and just let everyone know that we are working diligently to try to be in a position to maximize these dollars for these purposes. And I believe that's the last slide in the deck that I'll speak to. I'll turn it back over to, to Ms. Torres.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. And again, please note the efforts that Charlottesville City Schools has made to lower the thermometer and also to identify other possibilities for funding sources and options to release current Charlottesville City School projects in that CIP budget projection. Up till now, we've spent a lot of time talking about the many whys for reconfiguration during our joint February work session. The key points, you know, that we discussed are summarized here, some of those being addressing the aging facility issues, reducing student transitions during critical middle school years, providing modern state-of-the-art facilities to support best practices, and to improve safety, and to reduce our carbon footprint. The school board also wants to take this opportunity to, again, go on the record that we unanimously and passionately support maintaining the $75 million allocation currently in the CIP for the middle school project. It is the single biggest and most impactful step needed for this long overdue correction of a well-intentioned but unenforced of a well-intentioned but unenjoyed decision in the late nineteen eighties to resolve a segregation issue by adding significant transition and disruption during the developmental middle year, mid or middle school years for our students. There's good reason that you will struggle greatly to find comparable models to what we currently have for fifth to eighth grade in Charlottesville. If this were not enough, the buildings in question also need significant renovations for multiple reasons, including safety. And the buildings are not current by any standard. And reconfiguring Buford is the single most significant project the city has to reduce its carbon footprint. We are grateful to each of you for your interest and commitment to this important topic for our community. And it's a topic that must be kept central with affordable housing because decisions made about housing have significant impacts on the schools. They cannot and should not be mutually exclusive conversations. Next slide, please. Moving forward, we know continued collaboration is essential. We appreciate how city and school staff leadership worked together in this budget development process this year, so we could all arrive at this point with no surprises. As I just mentioned, we understand that all of us as elected officials need to take a holistic view of the challenges ahead and think systematically to solve problems together in the most efficient way possible. We pledge that our school leaders and this board will continuously use data and the best available information to make decisions for the students we serve. And we will be transparent in our work, both in developing our operating budgets and in the reconfiguration work that has been a very public and visible process since it began with a three million dollar allocation that enabled the design process to start. And now we are at the point of needing to decide more specifically about the cost and scope we are designing for. Please let us know when you would like to meet to continue this discussion and collaboration to keep us moving forward in this important process for current Charlottesville City School students and for many generations to come. Thank you again for your time. And if you have any questions, Dr. Gurley and Ms. Powell are available.
Counselors, have any questions?
Uh, no, not, not per se, but I, I do want to just say again that I appreciate the thoughtfulness that y'all have done in terms of trying to find money, uh, so to speak, to, to sort of help with the reconfiguration, uh, project. We'll see how all of that shakes out, but I appreciate that creativity, so thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to, um, chime in to say that, you know, um, I know a lot of work was put into this budget. I, I, I know what is involved in, in pulling it together. And, uh, and I also like the fact that there's no surprises that Dr. Gurley has and staff has been meeting with, um, Mr. Rogers and, and Ms. Hamel to, to address, um, some of the issues that we have. Of course not, you know, we are going to have to make the decision on the reconfiguration over the next month or so, as we have our work sessions and, and, you know, try to, uh, address this really critical issues, um, of the reconfiguration. And, um, but, um, the budget is very straightforward. Where, you know, we had to use a lot of the, um, ARPA money to, but we're winning our way off of that. And I think we did it very strategically, working with city council and with staff to, um, you know, but also getting some very critical things done over the last, um, couple of years. So very happy with the budget. You know, we now as a council will have to decide on the, the larger issue, so thank you.
Let me just say, we've had the city manager's budget for, I don't know, maybe six hours now. And it's two hundred and twenty-seven pages long. Pardon me for not having yet mastered it, uh, but we'll have to take a look and figure out. I, I haven't even had a chance to look at the capital piece of it. So, uh, a lot of discussions to have. And unfortunately, I'm, I for one, I'm not prepared to have much in the way of a substantive discussion tonight, but, uh, there will be plenty of other opportunities in the next four to six weeks. Counselors, any comments at this point?
Well, I do know that, um, I have been trying and will continue to keep trying, looking through as the Build Back Better Bill, um, gets released, various grants that we might be able to, and I'm actually planning on bringing this up on Hill Day next week. Um, especially regarding how localities are being kind of strangled at the state level. Um, and we'll continue to keep fighting that with the VML and VFC, et cetera, so.
One comment I would like to make, I, I did appreciate in particular two things. One was the effort to reduce the, the one-time funds going to, uh, recurring expenses this year so that it becomes possible to complete that process next year, instead of just saying, I will deal with all next year. And the second thing is I, I, I'm really excited about the fact that we can have a number of the capital problem, uh, capital expenditures for other schools taken care of, perhaps out of this funding. One of the things that has, uh, probably you've probably heard me make these comments before, but when we end up with things for the schools on the authorized but not issued bonds list, uh, something we thought we approved two years ago or three years ago, and we're wondering why hasn't this been done yet? This is a way to make it happen and that's great. It's great for you, it's great for us, it frees up money for other things. So I, I really do appreciate the thought that went into that. So.
Um, Lord, one quick thing, sir, um, that I, I hope that we will continue to push for this, um, sales tax of next year, you know, um, we have a little bit more time to talk to count, to, um, delegates and more importantly, their constituents in their different communities, just to, to allow our voters here to have the opportunity to, to vote on the, this, um, sales tax. So, um, it's, we, we need, I think our decisions over the next four to six weeks would be, would have been a lot easier with that option, so thank you.
And our delegate and our senator tell us not to completely give up hope for this, for this budget year. There may be some budget amendment that's proposed on the floor. But on the other hand, call it a hope rather than expectation. So, but yes, the next year, we may have more such discussions.
And I will also say that both of our local represent, our, our local senator and our local representative fought hard for this, did everything they could. Um, and it's, we need to be, anybody who, we need to be reaching out to other, other localities, friends and family who live across Virginia to ask them to get in touch with their representatives.
And by the way, I think, well, I appreciate the recognition, the, for Vice Mayor Wade and myself. Counselor McGill also made an appearance, I think at some ridiculously hour, early hour of the morning. Uh, and I don't remember whether either Mr. Pinkston or Mr. Payne did, but, um, but the one thing about these committees is they always meet at seven thirty in the morning. And for a night owl like me, man, that's, that's tough. Anyway, thank you all for a whole lot, a whole lot of people for, for a whole lot of work on this. And thank you, school board people, for, for this budget. If there's nothing else on this, can we, are we ready to move on? Thank you, school folks.
Thank you.
Next is the proposed city budget. Mr. Rogers? Are we ready to go ahead now, or again, anybody need a break? Need a break?
I, I would love a five-minute break.
Five-minute break, okay. See y'all back here in five minutes, then we'll get to Mr. Rogers.
Okay, good.
A lot of animal emergencies over the weekend.
Okay. Are we? All back, let's see, one, two, three.
Spacey is also in the peanut gallery, should you need.
Well, we've got all of our counselors and we've got the city manager, so let's go.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm very pleased to present to you the Charlottesville, Charlottesville FY twenty-three budget. We have, we don't have the books yet. The printed books will be available on, I think, Thursday. But we have sent you PDF. In that package is the city manager's budget letter. And I'll highlight some key points. One, we are presenting you, of course, with a balanced budget. We, this budget includes revenue of two hundred and sixteen million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. And as it's balanced, it's the same amount in expenditures. We are fortunate this year because there was a, I won't say a windfall, but there was a gain from reassessments, which added up to about eleven point nine percent, thereabout increase, which added eight million dollars to our revenue. Likewise, there were increases in meals taxes and, and a number of other taxes back to the pre-COVID level almost. So overall, there was fifteen million dollars in additional revenue that was included in this budget. In this budget, we tried to cover many of the priorities that council has identified. We fully funded the Charlottesville Public Schools request for level of four point two million dollars. The salary increase of three percent effective July one for employees. That's, I guess, the second half of the six point six percent increase that was given at mid-year. Two percent for retirees. We included funds for, what, seven new positions total of about a million, a million dollars. We have included funds for affordable housing, about seven point four million dollars, plus when you add other various pots of money in the capital budget that, that pops out at about ten. So we get to that, get to that level. We funded for the reconfigurations project for twenty-three. We have two point five million dollars for design that would allow them to continue that work if need be. With respect to the construction of, in the reconfiguration project, that would require additional revenue. And we knew that from our discussion during the budget workshop. That's why you authorized us to advertise a ten cents tax increase in property tax. That is included, that amount of nine point two million dollars that would be generated by ten cents increase in tax is included in the budget. But it is unallocated. It's unallocated for council to make the determination of how you want to spend both that revenue. That could be from the reconfiguration. We know that if you fund the reconfiguration, that's going to require at least seven and a half cents of that ten cents. And that also will then define our interest payments on, on bonds at a level that will increase us from currently about eleven million dollars a year to about twenty-four million dollars a year. So there are some choices that need to be made in this, in this process. Um, we're going to have a discussion on March thirtieth on the capital, capital budget. The CIP. And there may be opportunities there, different decisions that can be made to move some things around, to allocate more of that to the capital. I mean, to, to the reconfiguration project, that's, that's possible. Do you want to share your screen aspect? And, and let me say, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the, the, the work of the budget staff and the deputy city managers and the leadership in, in the departments in the city for their work in making sure that we delivered this budget on, on time. In our interview, when you asked me what was my priority, I said budget was number one. And so that has been my focus since joining with staff in January. And I appreciate the work of these outstanding public servants who really put their shoulder to the wheel to make sure that we get you a, a budget thoughtful piece that addresses the priorities.
So, um, Mr. Rogers, just quickly, I think you said March the thirtieth, but for the public is, isn't it March thirty-first? I just want to make. Thirty-first, okay.
Thirty-first, okay. So Chrissy, let's walk through this, this, this PowerPoint. Can everyone see our screen?
I think so.
Okay, so we'll get started. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. So just a little tidbit of information. The Budget Office received a couple weeks ago, or a couple months ago now, actually, the distinguished budget presentation award. This was the twenty-ninth time that the city has won this award and the twentieth consecutive time on the budget award. So we're pleased with that. There were some changes in criteria last year that were to take effect with budgets that were adopted after January one of twenty-twenty-one. And we implemented all of those and still were able to receive the award. So. Moving on to the budget, if we take a look at the sort of the general fund change, this is the percent change over year to year. This gives us a pretty long history here, going back to two thousand and eight. And as you can see, we're kind of all over the place. We were at a high in two thousand and eight. Had some significant declines from there. Then we kind of went up, we kind of go down, we're kind of all over the place. And if with the tax increase, we would be at that purple line, which is the twelve point four-six. Without the tax increase, we're at the, the blue line, which is the seven percent. So in, in this instance, just a reminder that, you know, when we look at projections, we have to consider that it's not always up. And this year with the, with the change is, is quite significant from some of the other years. One of the key factors here to just emphasize what Mr. Rogers just denoted is that the city manager's budget is balanced with the current ninety-five cent tax rate. The nine point two million that would be attributed to a ten cent tax increase remains unallocated in a reserve account and could be assigned for expenditure by council through our work sessions and the work that we'll do to move on from the proposed to the adopted budget in April. If we take a look here at our general fund revenues, as you know, we have several different categories. The largest category of that is the tax increase, or I'm sorry, the taxes, which make up about seventy-seven percent of our revenues. Moving on to license and permits, intergovernmental revenue, charges for services, and so on. But again, the tax revenue makes up the biggest part of our revenues. If we take a look here, there's roughly, I believe there's fourteen lines here that make up ninety percent of the city revenue. My total budget, again, is the two hundred and sixteen million of these fourteen lines. They make up a hundred and ninety-four million of that, real estate being the, the top producer here. Again, this number would be indicative of what the revenue would be if with the tax increase. Should council decide not to move forward with the tax increase, this would be reduced. And then the reserve would also be reduced. We talked about the impact of a real estate tax increase. Again, our current tax rate is ninety-five cents. We advertised the additional ten cents, which would put us at a dollar five. We know that from the last assessment, the average assessed value was four hundred and ten thousand dollars, which in twenty twenty-two, I'm, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one, that tax bill was roughly three thousand four hundred, I think it was eighty-seven dollars. And with the tax increase, that would roughly be four thousand three hundred and five dollars. So again, this is just meant to be an example. We know that when you compare parcels, there is dramatic differences. This is just based on an average. But some of the assessment increased from anywhere from zero percent to as much as thirty percent. So again, this is just an example. One other note, we are counting for the additional revenue that would be related to the tax increase. The number we're using is this nine million, two oh seven, one sixty-seven. That is a little bit less than if you did the math by some of the percentage. We gave you some charts to tell you what the, the penny is worth. The reason why it's a little bit less is that we actually did run this through our model. And in our model, we account for some uncollectibles and new construction and other things. And so that does make a little bit of a variance, but this is more accurate with how we normally project our real estate revenue. So I just, just want to point that out. Why didn't we include the real estate tax increase? Couple of reasons here. One, the construction money for the school reconfiguration project is really not needed until twenty twenty-four. As Mr. Rogers indicated, we have two and a half million dollars that is built in the current version of the twenty twenty-three CIP, which would allow for the continued design. The remaining seventy-two and a half million is in twenty twenty-four. And so therefore, we actually don't need those dollars in twenty twenty-three. School construction and funding options are still under consideration. There've been discussions with council and school board about various options. And so again, there's still decisions to be made there. And then also, what is the impact on other CIP priorities? That's still a discussion for council to make some determination on what they would like to do and what the impact of those would be. So as, as we look to this scale, it really is, gets back to a conversation and a balance between priorities and commitments and balancing available revenues to expenditures to make sure that we're able to advance whatever priorities council sets forth. Moving on to expenditures, again, we have, you know, lots of pieces of the pie here that we've talked about before. On the operating side, schools make up the largest portion of our general fund expenditure at roughly thirty-one point six percent. Debt service, as you'll notice, is four point three percent. And again, as any of these pieces of the pie change, so if debt service were to get bigger, then some of these other pieces will be crowded out or made smaller over time. We try to align the budget with council strategic plan. The strategic plan that we're doing was one that was actually adopted formally in twenty eighteen. It was adopted as a four-year plan. We have continued to extend this plan through twenty twenty-three. The plan contained five different goals. And as we move through some of the expenditures and also as you move through the budget document, you will see alignment with these goals. So one of those priorities is affordable housing. And within the budget, we are making significant investment in the capital budget. There's over seven point three million in FY twenty-three. That includes three million for public housing redevelopment, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand for the CAF, nine hundred thousand for supplemental rental assistance, and two and a half million dollars for the friendship court phase two. In addition, on the operating side, we've included two point eight million dollars for tax grant and relief. That's a million-dollar increase over what we budgeted in FY twenty-two. The, the extra dollars will be used to increase the household income limitation will increase from fifty-five thousand to sixty thousand. And we will also be merging the tax relief program and CHAP into one program to streamline that application process and also provide some additional program enhancements. One thing to note that while anyone who is not elderly or disabled, the home value threshold has to remain at the three seventy-five. That is defined by the VHDA home loan parameters, which are specified in the city charter. And we don't have the ability to adjust that unless the General Assembly gives us the power to do so. So although we can adjust the income levels as the assessments increase and as the home values are increasing, there are, there are homes that, and properties that are pricing out of the relief program. One additional note is that this dollar amount here only includes tax relief that is relevant to our current tax rate. Should we move forward with the additional ten cent tax rate, we would, we would probably need to look at increasing the relief here as well. And one final note is that of all the dollars that we're spending in affordable housing that we've just highlighted, one thing that is not sort of bulleted here is all of these sort of programmatic and administrative expenses that take place just within normal city operations to administer these programs. Moving on to equity and inclusion, we are providing additional funding. But we are moving the ADA coordinator from Neighborhood Development Services to the Office of Equity and Inclusion. We are also continuing to support the activities of the city's minority business program and the Office of Human Rights. Workforce development and economic development. We are going to continue to invest in both the downtown job center, the growing opportunities workforce development programs, and we plan to continue job fairs and community events. And we still strive to be a premier location for businesses. Safety and security, we will fully fund. There is one point two million that's added to the CIP that will fully fund the replacement of bypass fire station number one. That project will total out to about five point nine million. We also will continue to fully fund the police civilian oversight board. We're going to continue to invest in our employees. This budget includes a little over five and a half million dollars. That includes a three percent COLA for all employees effective July one, twenty twenty-two. It builds in the full year of the mid twenty twenty-two salary, the six percent increase that was given to employees. It factors in a two percent COLA for retirees. It also maintains no changes in the healthcare premiums for employees and it continues the GIM subsidy program. We are continuing our investment in city schools. We, as noted, we are fully funding the school board's request of the six point, the six, sixty-two point nine million dollar request. That's a four point two million dollar increase over FY twenty-two. There's also seven point one million in the CIP program for twenty-three that include both priority capital improvements, the general capital improvement dollars, and also HVAC replacement. It funds the remaining needed funds to replace the CHS roof and the two and a half million dollars for the reconfiguration project that I mentioned, and then another two hundred thousand for the small cap program. The budget also includes about a million dollars worth of additions or service, or what we're calling service enhancement and efficiencies. So we are funding, we will be funding a FOIA coordinator and, and FOIA management software. We'll be enhancing the development review process with the addition of one administrative assistant. We'll be increasing or preparing to increase, for increased project development and management needs by adding a facilities development manager. We're looking to enhance customer service within NDS by adding three positions, a support services manager, a transportation planner, and a building inspector. We are preparing for collective bargaining by adding the labor relations analyst. And we also are making some IT infrastructure improvements by operationalizing these costs. Some of these costs were added during COVID and they were funded previously through the federal one-time cares money. And we are now adding those to the budget because they are part of our operations at this point. And so again, this totals out to about one point three million. Outside and nonprofit agencies, the vibrant community funding process will be meeting next week on March seventeenth to talk about this. And that funding remains at about two and a half million dollars. There's a small increase of about eighty-four thousand in twenty twenty-two. One new addition this year with this process is there will be ninety thousand dollars of unallocated funding that can be used for capacity building and technical assistance for organizations that were new to the process. And they will be given an opportunity to review their applications and find a way for improved outcomes that will be scored very similar as they were originally. There were also what we call contractual agencies, largely agencies where we have agreements that are regional agreements. And so there were decreases in some and increases in others. And some examples are listed there. The general fund transfer to debt service for twenty twenty-two is about eleven point one million. That's about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase, which is all attributed to better meals tax collections and our one percent, our equivalent of one percent transfer policy of meals tax to debt service. And then again, the general fund contribution to the CIP for twenty twenty-three, that's our cash contribution, is six point seven. It's a million. It's also worth noting that there's an additional six point seven million from the FY twenty-one year-end appropriation or surplus that still remains in the CIP contingency and is unallocated. Again, the capital improvement program, we've talked about this for a while now. No changes there from what was presented to the planning commission. The top three priorities with the highest funding in the, in order are affordable housing, the school capital improvement, transportation and access, and then parks and rec facilities, public safety, general government, and economic development. So again, as Mr. Rogers stressed, there are a few options for council with this budget. Number one is what to do with the nine point two million that remains unallocated, attributed to potential tax increase. Also, the full value of personal property tax revenue is not accounted for in this budget as we, Commissioner Divers has spoken with you due to COVID and other reasons, used, I'm sorry, personal property valuations have gone up significantly. And there will be a proposal that will be coming to you to adopt a, a rate that would be lower. Um, and there will be a proposal that will be coming to you to um adopt a, a rate that would be lower um that would equalize that revenue. And then finally, there's the option to review, um, as some of you have mentioned, some of the other taxes such as meals and lodging and what the capacity of those revenues would be. And just as a quick snapshot, again, a table we've shown you before. Um, this is just to give you some value options, uh, what a penny on the real estate tax rate is, meals tax, property tax, uh lodging tax, and then cigarette tax. Again, we're capped out there, so we don't have a lot of options. But again, um, those are decisions that council can make. Um, reminding you of the budget calendar, the month of March will be busy with work sessions. We'll have one this Thursday night where we will start talking about revenues and general fund expenditures in a little more detail. The seventeenth will be the outside and nonprofit agencies. We'll have a public hearing on the tax rates on the twenty-first, uh, community budget forum on the twenty-third. March thirty-first, we'll be talking about the C I P. Uh, we'll have another public hearing on April fourth. April seventh, we have a work session um that is tentative. If we still have work to do, we can hold that if we're done, we, we will cancel. And then finally, the budget will be approved on April twelfth. Um, we're excited. Uh, my colleague Brian Ray, who came to the Budget Office this year, has developed um a new budget visual, visual visualization, easy for me to say, um, that will be live on our website starting tomorrow um on the budget webpage. It will give the public um the opportunity, you can go in and actually choose a department, and you will be able to see a line item comparison um budget from twenty-two to twenty-three for each city department. Um, and in addition, we have, um, there is a work session uh page on our subsection on the budget webpage. So all the materials that we present either in the work sessions, this PowerPoint, um, anything relevant to the budget, you can find on that webpage. Um, as soon as we get the hard copy of the books, there will also be copies at the Gordon um Avenue and Central Library branch. And with that, that concludes the presentation and we'd be happy to take any questions.
That's right. Mr. Mayor.
Counselors, any questions?
Um, yeah, um, Chrissy, uh, it was when I was writing down some notes, it was one comment you said right before the C I P slide that you mentioned something about um unfunded or, or something. Can you, is it possible to go back to that slide you were?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't get, I was.
No worries. What, what's it the um year-end surplus that's unallocated in?
Yes, yes. Yeah, what, what was that again? That's what it was, not unfunded and unallocated.
Yeah, so we have a policy um that, sorry, I'm trying to find that slide. Um, that takes any year-end surplus over and above our minimum fund balance and transfers that to the C I P. Uh, for the end, the year ended FY twenty-one, um, that was six point seven million dollars.
Mm-hmm. So, okay, that, I, that's what I, that, I understand that, I, I just didn't, I was writing and, and I didn't hear it all. So I had a couple of other kind of questions or comments, so eh, you know, I've been bumping around City Hall for, you know, a couple of months now. And one thing that I would like to see, I'm glad that we're making, you know, efforts for um pay increase and things like that, um, but does the budget include some more structural type of changes so that, you know, a few years down the road, that we're not trying to play catch up with surrounding localities again as far as staff retention and incentives and just things like that? It, it seemed like we had, the city had just been kind of stalled for several years and it's like, okay, you know, so it's like to establish some ongoing ways so that we can continually monitor and keep up with these type of things.
Uh, Vice Mayor, the uh compensation study will be our guide in that. Uh, that will help us look at all of the positions citywide and uh will uh help us become competitive and will know what we have to do to keep up, you know, going forward. So that, that will be the guide. And like we said, said earlier, uh, Deputy City Manager Ashley reported that's uh, that study is about nine, nine to ten months, I think.
Mm-hmm.
But it's moving in the right direction.
Mm-hmm. So um, this is maybe something we can discuss further when we get to the nonprofits. But um, I'd like to just know a little bit more about our agreement with, you know, like someone who mentioned the Discovery Mu- Museum, McGuffin Art Center, and I think um the history, um.
Historical society.
Historical society, yes. And um Jefferson, I just want to know what, what all those things are um so we can compare them.
We'll, we'll look into all of that.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm gonna say, they're kind of scattered throughout the budget in different places.
Yeah.
Um, some of them are contractual obligations that we do every year. Others are um where we have entered into agreements about building space that isn't necessarily captured even in the budget.
Yeah.
It's, it's intrinsic value of the space that we're not charging.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I, I know Deputy Sanders has been looking into a lot of that as well, so you know, I mean, I'm just like, I don't background stuff.
Yeah.
So we'll get back, we'll get back to you with the, with the full, full story on each one of those.
Well, and I mean, the, I, my final comment is that, that this is my first um city council budget and um so far, so good. Um, it's, it's been smooth, that is very understandable for me. I, I just, you know, and I, I know we have the difficult decisions and I like the way you laid it out for us how to deal with um, you know, the, the tax increase. And um, and I know we're gonna have, you know, just some really robust discussion over the next um weeks. And I like the fact that we have a lot of opportunities for public uh to have input. And, and trust me, they already have, you know, we've received a lot of emails and just, you know, for me going to the grocery stores, you know, walking in there, but you, you know, they're sharing their thoughts and this is great because um I know many people that I talk to when I'm walking around the city, they may not necessarily email or call or whatever, but I'm getting that, that input. So thank you very much um the, uh, for you and your staff. It's just, it's um, it's great, it's tough decisions, but that's what they elected us to do. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Wade, let me add just a couple of comments on your mention of, of McGuffey and Discovery Museum. And um, I'm blanking on the third one now. Uh, the, the three leases, they, they, these are all below market leases. And the issue uh that, one of the issues that needs to be discussed when we talk about the Jefferson School is an issue that we had started to talk about almost two years ago and it got kind of waylaid. And that's a question of a loan, is it a loan, is it a grant that the city made uh to, to enable the purchase of the Jefferson School in the first place? And when we start looking at how we're going to, you know, support the Jefferson School, that's an issue that's gonna have to get revisited also because there is a dispute in the records and in the memories as to whether that was intended to be a grant of five million dollars that we would just forgive and not expect to be repaid. It's actually, I think, written up as though it's a loan that is to be repaid, but there is a reason why it had to be that way. It is an issue, it's an issue that is more complicated than just, gee, we should write a check to the Jefferson School, yes.
I think you're getting the Jefferson Heritage Center and the Jefferson School can, confabulated there. We gave the loan to the Jefferson School. It's the Jefferson Heritage Center that rents from the Jefferson School that's asking for the two hundred thousand.
Ah, I appreciate that clarification because I was not, I, I was not focusing on the difference.
Okay.
They're clearly related, but we need to, we need to keep them separate to the extent that we can. Thanks.
Two separate organizations, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, others have other questions? I've got some, uh, if others are, are ready to go.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I appreciated the slide presentation, it was very helpful. I'll look over that again and I'll spend the next days uh delving into the, into the details. So I appreciate the thought that went into two things. I, I appreciate how the notion of a ten cent tax increase is sort of out there, but also sort of sequestered, um, which is a good thing, uh, because we may not vote for full ten cent tax increase. Um, so I thank you for that, I thank you for the attention to all of the various things that have been coming to y'all from us. Uh, very grateful. Um, you know, I like, like Juan, I'm a newbie to all of this. And so I'm, I'm hoping that, for instance, at the meeting we have on Thursday, um, this coming Thursday, first work session, um, you know, I'll get more sort of behind the scenes uh information about what, what's going into, into the budget, so.
Okay.
I have no current questions with this, with the presentation, I've got to spend some more time going through. And more of my questions will probably be coming on Thursday and subsequent more intensive work sessions.
Right.
Likewise, you know, I don't have um, you know, specific questions right now, um, but just reiterate as I've been saying, you know, um, we're, we're clearly not at the point where I think the budget is um balanced, funded, or um, realistic. So there's a lot more work to do, um, which I know we're gonna get into, um, you know, over the coming weeks. But yeah.
Okay, I, I have a number of specific questions, many of which I am taking from the letter and the, that, and the document that accompanied the letter. Uh, in an operating expenditure changes, uh, it lists uh among things that are reclassified, added, or unfunded in FY twenty-three. And I'm, I, I, I guess I'm wondering about the inclusion of the word unfunded there because it seems like everything else is being, it seems like everything there is being funded. Am I misunderstanding what the word unfunded is meant to communicate there?
You're not, that's just a uh category heading that we could have updated. In, in years past, we have had some, like, for example, last year, uh, we unfunded a couple of police officer positions. So that's just an, a head, a general heading that we could have updated to make more clear. There is nothing that was unfunded.
Okay, okay. So specific questions, uh, Public Works Personnel to Help with the Climate Action Plan. Tell me a little bit more about that, hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, what's gonna happen, who's, what, what are you contemplating there?
Yeah, so that was actually, um, I, that was an error that I found. Again, that was a leftover from last year, we've updated that on the website. That was a position that we funded last year. Um, it's in the process of being worked on and filled, but it is not a new funded position for twenty-three.
Okay, it's new in the sense that it hasn't been filled yet.
Correct.
Not for budgeting purposes, okay. Um, and is that person still going to be within the Public Works Division?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, um, next, under Public Works, Facilities Development Division Manager. What, what is that? Or tell me what that person does.
So that's an existing division. Today, we actually have one individual who is split uh serving as the manager of the Environmental Sustainability Division and the Facility Development Division. The priority now is that we're gonna actually shift back so that Crystal can return full-time to the environmental side and we can hire someone to handle the facilities development side. Those are all of our construction projects, which includes schools activities.
So the, at least one practical effect of that is that we get more resources, i.e. Crystal's full-time now back on climate action and the sustainability things?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Then acknowledging that we heard the request.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, then there are three F T Es in N D S, Support Services Manager, Transportation Planner, Building Inspector. I'm just curious, is there something in particular that those three positions are intended to, uh, need that those are intending to respond to? Uh, why those three, why there, why now?
Yeah, so that is all a part of the transformation of N D S that I was given as a task when I arrived here in July, that we had to do what we could do to stabilize that department. Uh, the sys- the uh customer service position, system support position is really focused on making sure that we can handle better how our requests come in for permits and that we can manage that process a little bit more intently. So we'll have a full-time person oversee that process and help us reform it. The transportation planner is actually going to be a, a hybrid of the long-range planner position that we felt we've needed for quite some time, but to specialize on the transportation side so that we can do more as it relates to the comp plan and, and more longer-range vision work that needs to be done. And then the third position is the building inspector because we just actually have excess capacity uh that we're unable to really get to in a reasonable schedule, so we're just trying to add some additional help there.
Okay, cuz I, I will tell you that one of the, the things that people have complained about most vociferously to me has been permitting and licensing and that kind of thing in N D S. And so if we can get that straightened out, that would be wonderful. I know that the, that that was one of the things that uh both Mr. Freeze and I, you as well, were told, fix this. And I'm glad to know that that's happening.
That's absolutely what the focus has been.
Coming down a couple lines, there, under Compensation Benefits, there is Attrition Savings, and it says five hundred thousand dollars, I would think that a savings would be a parentheses number, not a positive number. What's happening there? How do we get savings that involve spending more money?
So that's just an increase, um, but last year we um budgeted five hundred thousand. We increased that to a million um in twenty-three.
Okay, and that's savings that we are expecting because we're not gonna replace people who are retiring? Or because we're hiring somebody at a lower, lower rate than the person retiring?
A little bit of all that, we're just assuming that, you know, we, we fully budget all positions and then we're just assuming that there is some level that will not be filled either through retirements, vacancies, or otherwise.
A- a- and, and the time it takes on the recruitment process.
Sure.
Well, you know, that, that, that there is never a hundred percent, uh, un- unfortunately. And, and so uh you can keep that savings and just put it into the surplus at the end. Or in the course of the year, you can reallocate that savings to some other uh productive activity.
Then the next line below that says two percent retiree COLA starting July one, twenty twenty-one, fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Uh, I was, I was wondering about that.
You're not more retro, retroactive, no.
Yeah.
Catching all of those today, aren't you?
Thanks, Lloyd.
Hey, I just want people to know I actually read this stuff. Um, under Transfer to Human Services, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand eighty-two dollars. I take that's an increase over some amount that's in the budget now. What's that all about?
Yeah, so the tran- the total transfer to human services that's budgeted for twenty twenty-three is just a little over a million five. Um, part of what's going on there is uh quite frankly, a catch-up. Um, the Human Services uh Fund had a large fund balance um over several years for a number of reasons. Um, one being um that they had uh fees that were coming in for their services that they were able to retain. Um, and so for a number of years, in order to buy down that fund balance, we were um under-budgeting the city's match on many of their grants and buying down their fund balance. under budgeting the city's match on many of their grants and buying down their fund balance. When COVID hit, they weren't able to retain as many of their fee for service charges. In addition, they took on multiple things related to COVID. And so this, this is a balance that basically catches up and fully funds the city's match for those services.
Okay. And then I a general question about, I know that we have a policy of allocating three percent of the general fund revenues as a general fund contribution to the CIP. And I gather four or five percent to go to debt service. Is that, is that a formula also?
The only formula we have for debt service is the equivalent of a penny on the meals tax rate. Otherwise, the transfer to debt service is just based on our projections where we are leveling out the general fund transfer to meet the debt service requirements.
Okay. Is there any any reason why three percent is the magic number? Other than just historically, that's what we've done?
That's just our policy. We certainly could change that.
Well, I mean, the reason I'm asking is that if people are talking about a tax increase where some portion of the money is going to be going to the capital improvement program, the easy way, at least for me, to conceptualize that is to say, well, maybe we're going to give five percent for this year, and that would have the effect of adding four million dollars to the capital fund or something like that. I'm trying to think about how how people think we're going to turn operating revenues, tax revenues into capital spending. Which is when they talk about how we're going to raise taxes in order to pay for a school proposal, that's kind of what we're doing.
In the budget, there are certain financial policies that council has been presented in the past. It's an opportunity each time for you to reevaluate those policies. That would be one that you could take a look at. That three percent can be different. If that's, if that's the choice of council after, after you, after your discussion.
Okay, I mean, I know some of these, some of these percentages have some significance for reasons that don't appear on the particular page we're looking at at the moment. And I was just wondering whether, whether this was one of those.
I, I think we ought to look and see where the three percent came from, and it might be related to something. He might be right.
Those, those are the questions I had at this point. Oh, I do have one other question. On the PCOB, you have noted that we're funding it to two hundred and thirty six seven thousand dollars or something like that. How much have they spent this year? How much has been spent out of that budget line item?
I do not have that updated number in my head, Mayor, but I will get it to you as soon as possible.
Okay, I was just wondering.
I would say that a little bit close to half of that is salary benefits related. So that's definitely spent. Programmatic, I'm not sure.
Okay. I mean, I was just wondering. Thank you. We'll get to the other details later. So I've, is any other counselor have any other questions for the city manager staff as it pertains to the budget?
Mayor, Mr. Pinkston's hand is up. I don't know if he continues to have a question.
Brian, you, you have a question?
No, I didn't know. I didn't know that I've done that. Sorry.
Okay, so I guess.
It's all completely clear.
Well, now I know who I'm going to ask my next questions of. Okay, so I think we're done with that for now. Thank you all. Both city manager's staff and particularly Ms. Hamel continues to do incredible work on all of this and actually is able to explain some of it to somebody like me. And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, next item on our agenda is the resolution to approve a special use permit at twenty one sixteen Angus Road. Dan and O'Connell, City Planner, will present. Dan, thank you for sticking with us.
Absolutely. Good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight I have a request by Dermot LLC for a special use permit to allow for increased residential density on a subject property. The subject property is currently developed with two separate structures in this case. One is a twenty one unit apartment building with the address of two one one eight Angus Road. And there's also a thirty two hundred square foot office building, two one one six Angus Road. The applicant wishes to renovate the latter commercial building to accommodate up to six additional residential dwelling units. The subject property is currently zoned B one business. And under this zoning classification, up to seventeen dwelling units could be developed by right on this site with a density of twenty one dwelling units per acre. A higher residential density of up to eighty seven dwelling units per acre is permitted in the zoning code with a special use permit. Commercial office space is also permitted by right. The current apartment use is illegal nonconforming use with a DUA of twenty five, and the additional six dwelling units would increase the DUA to thirty three. The recently adopted twenty twenty one Future Land Use Map designates this address as a neighborhood mixed use node. Neighborhood mixed use nodes are described as compact neighborhood centers containing a mix of residential and commercial uses arranged in smaller scale buildings. No density is specified, but up to five stories in height is permitted with mixed use buildings being encouraged. The neighborhood mixed use node designation applies to both parcels to the south and east of the subject property encompassing the areas surrounding Route twenty nine. Areas to the west of the subject property are designated as higher intensity residential. The proposed redevelopment does meet some of the twenty twenty one comprehensive plan's goals regarding sustainable reuse of existing buildings, protecting the existing identity of city neighborhoods, and supporting additional housing choice within the city. Proposed new residential density does fit within the future land use category of the neighborhood mixed use node, which allows for multifamily residential development within proximity of commercial space and within the existing neighborhood context. The proposed change of use would result in a reduction of available commercial space within the city. However, the applicant indicates that the current commercial offices are vacant or underutilized, and the small size of the building in question would not be a significant decrease in the context of the larger commercial complexes located nearby around Route twenty nine. Overall, staff believes this increased density would be appropriate for a transitional district and would eliminate an existing nonconformity for the established apartment use. Staff recommended that the request for higher density be approved with the following conditions. One, that up to thirty three dwelling units per acre be permitted on the subject property, and a maximum of eighteen bedrooms be allowed within the structure to be renovated, which is two one one six Angus. The second condition would be that automatic fire sprinklers and alarm shall be installed within the structure to be renovated as required by the Virginia Building Code. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their February eighth twenty twenty two meeting and was recommended for approval with these two conditions by a vote of five to zero. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions. Also, I believe the applicant, Mr. Patrick McDermott is also on the call if you'd like to ask him anything as well.
Counselors have any questions? Either for Mr. O'Connell or for the applicant.
It seems like a good project. I mean, in the area where more housing would be valued, I guess it's near Best Buy or close to Best Buy over there in the meadows. So I appreciate the creativity of trying to do something different with that, that building. I think it's a good project.
You're muted, Juan. We're not hearing you.
Sorry, I didn't see any comments from the adjacent property owners or existing residences in that area. Do we know? I mean, I know they're writing as, you know, businesses along that corridor. So I think if they find with that, they could be fine with this. But I just wanted to know if we had any comments or input from the adjacent property owners.
Sure, we did have a community meeting on this a couple of months ago. I think we had one or two comments. One commenter was a resident who had brought up a bunch of property maintenance concerns that were unrelated to the property under consideration for this SUP. And I think there was one other written comment that did not really specify anything relevant. But no other comments from the surrounding property owners.
Okay. Other questions? I would, I would just say I agree. I think it's a pretty, pretty straightforward application, and I don't see a complication to it. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Sure. I moved the adoption of the resolution included in our agenda materials granting this special use permit within SP twenty one dash zero 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 six based on the finding that the proposed permit is required by public necessity convenience, general welfare, general welfare or good zoning practice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Robertson, is that consistent with the note you sent us in the chat?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, any discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five, nothing. Thank you so much, Mr. O'Connell, applicant, other folks for sticking with us till nine thirty.
Thank you very much.
Over and out. Next is James Freeze, NDS, presenting us with an appropriation for Seaville Plans Together. Mr. Freeze?
Good evening, Mayor Snook, members of City Council. As you noted, my name is James Freeze, Director of Neighborhood Development Services, and I'm here tonight presenting a resolution appropriating funds for the continuation of the Seaville Plans Together project. Appropriating funds from the Small Area Plans Account from the City's Capital Projects Fund. I have a presentation if you'd like me to share it, or I can just speak to the item.
However, you feel appropriate.
Fair enough. I will just, I'll just pull up screen. All right, is that working?
Yes.
Great. There we go. All right, as you all know, we're on the third part of our three part Seaville Plans Together project. Last year, we adopted the Affordable Housing Plan and the Comprehensive Plan. And this year, we're working on the rewrite of the zoning ordinance in order to implement those two plans. The resolution that is for consideration tonight, I should note, this is the first, this is the first two readings, has two parts to it. The first part is for a hundred and forty three thousand eight hundred and ten dollars for community engagement and project management as an ongoing activity. And then the second part is for a housing market outcome modeling for forty five thousand dollars. That community engagement and project management aspect of this is really being driven by the fact that we have a project that was originally scoped as a twenty five month project, and now we're in month, I believe, twenty eight with another twelve to thirteen or so months left to go. The money originally allocated for community engagement and project management work is very close to fully expended because that's been an ongoing activity, month in and month out for the last several years. Notably, the, the portion of the budget that is for the actual writing of the zoning ordinance document is fully funded and sufficient to complete the project for the, for the, for the remaining of the remainder of the year. So it's really about these ongoing project management and community engagement activities that we need additional funding in order to maintain those activities over the next year. The housing market outcomes work is really about modeling, essentially modeling, creating a model that will attempt to predict how the market, housing market would respond to the proposed changes in the zoning ordinance. That would be essentially looking at what would be the scale or pace of new housing development that might happen, what types of housing, what level of affordability, et cetera. And this is, we really consider this essential work for both council and the planning commission and the public to, to get an understanding of what these, what these changes in zoning would produce on the ground. So I'm going to pause there and see if there's any questions. The remainder of the presentation really focuses on our community engagement program and, and the overall project schedule going forward, which we have done previous presentations on, but I'm happy to refresh the council on those specifics. But again, let me pause here and see if there's any questions.
E, yeah, so can you explain a little bit more what the housing market outcome modeling is? It's been a while since I've been out of my planning days, and is that something new fangled thing you can plug into an app or something or what?
Well, no, I mean, not, not exactly plug it into an app, unfortunately. That would certainly ease the effort. No, what, what are, what our consultant team from HRNA is going to do is they're going to look at the current trends in the housing market. What's the current pace of activity? What, what data do we have on what's happening in the housing market today? And then they're going to attempt to project based on that data, what kind of response are we going to see from the housing market in terms, based on the changes in zoning? So again, you know, to put it more clearly, how many housing units might we see on a year by year basis with the change in zoning? What types of housing units, you know, is it going to steer more towards two families or more towards ADUs? Is it, you know, looking at different parts of the city? Is it going to lead to teardowns, or is it going to lead to reuse of existing buildings? These are a lot of the fundamental questions that people have about the results of the, the change in zoning. We've heard these questions a number of times over the course of the development of the comprehensive plan in the context of the land use map. And this is our attempt to, to use data and use our, the, the experts we have available to us to try and project the answers to those questions. And this work is actually going to occur in this first phase of the zoning project along with modeling of what we call the built outcomes, which is looking at basically what buildings might potentially or could be built on a typical lot in a typical neighborhood. The, these two modeling efforts will inform the ability of council and the planning commission to give us kind of that nod we're looking for at the end of this first phase to move forward into the drafting. So you guys remember, the first phase of this project is going to define our approach. So it's us basically saying, here's what we propose to do in the zoning ordinance, and then the next phase of the work is actually drafting it and doing it.
I think that this is pretty much what I was asking for about six months ago.
It is, in fact, yes.
I just wanted to be sure. I'm curious, I see that the, the Small Area Plan Fund says has current balance four hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. I assume they would now be three hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay, do we have any plans at this point to do anything else with the Small Area Plan Fund? Is there a small area plan that we have, that we want to be doing that we haven't gotten to yet?
Denton Page?
Yes, certainly. Counselor McGill stole the words right out of my mouth. What we do, in fact, in the comprehensive plan identifies a list of small area plans that, that, that plan recommends that we do going forward. I have put together a spreadsheet that attempts to allocate these funds out over time to various small area plan efforts, basically putting together a work plan. It's a five year work plan, looking ahead at, at these different small area plans that were identified in the comprehensive plan for a number of reasons. The first one out of the gate that I would recommend at this point in time is Tethin Page as well as the Preston Avenue Corridor.
Okay, so these are things that I know we've sort of talked about, gee, it would be nice someday to do. Is this something, for example, for the Tenth and Page Plan, is that something that you need councils offer? you need council's authorization to do, or is that something you've got the authority to do with the funds that are already allocated, and you just go ahead and get started?
I, I believe the, the, the authorization already exists, but, but I feel compelled to double-check that.
Let me say, I'm asking the question not because I want to slow you down.
Absolutely.
Because I want to see if we can speed you up.
Well, i- in, in all honesty, I, I would not attempt to tackle this until we're done with the zoning project.
Okay.
What I would, what I would, ideally, what I'd like to have set up is that as the zoning project is moving into the adoption phase, we're releasing an RFP and getting, getting our ducks in a row, if you will, so that we can begin that project ideally next spring. So if we're aiming for, say, a February, between a February or April adoption of the zoning ordinance, we'd be able to hit the ground running in April or May with that project.
Okay, take a weekend off and then get to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Mr. Freeze, in your, I guess, your quest that's part of the overall budget that we're looking at or we presented earlier, in the very first intro, you presumably have some money set aside, a request for just topping up your small, your small area plan fund as well as the next requirements to get this project done in terms of paying for consultants and staff, is that right?
I'm sorry, in, in, in reference to the small area plans?
Well, I guess, just in terms of all of the, the work that you're trying to get done, both the small area plans that you're hoping to do, I guess you're trying to get through a number per year perhaps, or you're, you're wanting to essentially put pause on all the smaller, small area plans until this particular effort is complete, is that right?
Yeah, I, I, in terms of developing new plans, yes, trying to get through the zoning project. Also recognizing that each plan that we adopt comes with a range of implementation actions that also require some staff capacity. Now, we share those staffing responsibilities with other departments, but one of the things I hope to do over the next year is also work on organizing our implementation efforts within basically moving forward on, on the implementation items we've identified, both in the comprehensive plan and small area plans. Collectively, there's a lot of work there that's been identified to be done. The zoning is like a big chunk of that, but there's other stuff that we should also be looking at moving forward with.
And, and I guess the point I'm trying to make in expertly here, but your, the budget that's being proposed that we saw the draft of earlier includes what you need next year to do with the stuff that you just required.
Yes.
Or, or just discuss.
Yes. Yep.
So really, the substance of what we're looking at right now is simply reallocating some money that you already have, reallocating it to, to get this project done.
Absolutely.
That seems like a straightforward enough thing. I'm, I'm personally ready to make a resolution or a motion if others are ready.
Well, resolution is always in order. If you want to make a motion, then we can just continue discussion afterwards.
I would note that this is the first of two readings.
Okay, true. So all, all we really need is, is an agreement that we're, we think it's generally a good idea, and we want to pass it on to the March twenty-first consent agenda for a second reading. Is that?
Going to the consent agenda.
I'm sorry?
Going to consent agenda.
You okay with that?
I'm happy with that.
Yeah.
Consent agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
Michael, how are you on that?
That's good with me.
Okay, good. Let's move it on to the consent agenda for the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Freeze.
All right, thank you. Have a great evening.
Yeah. Uh, another first reading appropriation from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation to Charlottesville Area Transit, nine hundred eighty thousand dollars. Mr. Williams? Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor Snook, Vice Mayor Wade, Members of Council. This is a good paper. So this is one where we are getting some additional money annually. Annually, the, the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation allocates grant funding to CAT to assist with general operations on February first of this year. CAT was informed that the Commonwealth Transportation Board, which is a governing body that controls the overseas transportation projects in the Commonwealth, approved a revision to the FY twenty-two revenue forecast, which included an uplift in state funding for grant recipients. Therefore, we're going to get an additional nine hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. This paper appropriates that dollars, but also earmarks three hundred thousand dollars to do funding the two studies that we had talked about when I informed council on January eighteenth of this year in their work session. But, and in my presentation called The State of Service, we talked about doing alternative fuel vehicles as priority vision number two. The three hundred thousand dollars that will be earmarked will complete the feasibility study and develop the, and help us to also develop the integration plan. So we're hoping that you'll be able to appropriate the funding and then allow me to earmark the three hundred thousand to get the two studies completed.
Counselors, have any questions for Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Good job.
I know there had been discussion of, you know, the, the long-term vision for CAT that you had presented to us several meetings ago, sort of the dollar figure that would need to be associated with that for city council's investment in order to make it happen. Sort of what, what percentage of that is that covering and, and what level of investment should we expect to need to make into CAT to still fully realize the vision that you had been presenting to us and working towards?
So this funding, the five hundred and eighty thousand has to be spent this year, so we can't take this money over. So we're, what we're proposing to do is allocate portions of it for operating budget, but also get these done, these, these two studies done. We're still looking at the exact number because in the budget, it's proposed for a three percent increase. We had proposed, we had thought it was going to be a two percent increase, so we're going to go back and calculate. So that number will change, but it will also allow us to see the number of drivers and give you an additional drivers that will be needed. And we'll give you an, an accurate figure on that. And then the capital investment that must be met to get to the fifty-minute model. I can have all those numbers for Members of Council and forward it by tomorrow at noon. So I can make sure you get that information.
Thank you, yeah, and that would, that would definitely helpful as we, you know, begin our, our budget work session on Thursday.
Yes, sir.
But to be clear, so this, basically what we're doing with this resolution, or is this the first reading?
It's just first reading, yeah.
Yeah. But what we're doing is formally accepting this money from the state, correct? And you're hoping to use some of these funds to fund some of the studies that will be enabling to help you get the layout, the, the vision you have for the fifteen-minute transit, is that correct?
This one, correct. So the, the majority of what's being allocated here is to do the studies to really focus in on the alternative fuel vehicle portion of the vision. It, it coincides with the operation piece, but this is the first step in getting an, at a, a required plan done that FTA wants to see.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, or are we good to move it on to this docket for the second reading next time?
Can it be on the consent agenda? Is that acceptable?
It can be.
Was there a reason to go through it again?
No. Consent agenda, everybody cool with that?
I would, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we get to the local continuity of government ordinance, governance ordinance. Mr. Rogers and Ms. Robertson will present this to us.
There we go. Okay, here we go. Mr. Mayor, Council, you've been under an emergency since April of twenty-one. And that emergency lasts for six months at a time. It's been renewed time and time again. We're at another point now where some decision needs to be made on or before April seventh. So it's still before, before midnight, so it's, i- i- it's, it's on that a decision has to be made whether you go forward with another emergency, which would continue restrictions in terms of public meetings and with other precautions because of the pandemic, or whether you let the emergency pass and expire and everything is open. And so, so Lisa, you want to chime in on that? I think that's the decision, though.
Yeah.
I, I had thought we had March eighteenth as our deadline.
Um, March eighteenth is the date on which your continuity of governance ordinance will, the current ordinance will expire.
Okay.
And so the reason that it's on your agenda tonight is that March eighteenth will happen before your second meeting in March. And so what I'd like to do is direct your attention to page one hundred of one hundred and three in, in your packet. So coming into tonight, we haven't really had an opportunity to talk in very specific terms with city council regarding what city council's preferences might be in terms of phasing or specific types of meetings. So beginning on, at the bottom of page one hundred, what we've done is we have taken your existing continuity of governance ordinance and we've kept the provision that provides for electronic meetings. But we've also inserted a proposed new section three, which says that notwithstanding the provisions of paragraph two, which is, is where it says all the meetings will be electronic. City council may itself choose to physically assemble for a meeting in a specific location, subject to a safety plan that would be approved by the mayor and the city manager in advance of the meeting. So if city council would like to physically assemble together for a specific meeting, this ordinance would delegate to the mayor the responsibility to work out with the city manager what, what the, how that meeting would be managed in terms of COVID precautions. Things like how many people would be in the room, will there be a mask requirement? How will compliance with the rules be monitored? What would the spacing be? All those things we haven't really had a chance to nail down specifically. So this, this new section three discusses what would be a component of a safety plan. And the new section three would allow for people to continue to participate electronic, whether it's staff or members of the public, even while some other people on staff or members of the public might be physically present as well. And then finally, this paragraph three would also allow city council by a specific, specific vote on a motion to authorize another public body to physically assemble for a meeting in a specific location, also subject to a safety plan. So as city council knows, there are quite a few boards and commissions, and a number of them may wish to meet. But a lot of those boards and commissions were taking place in rooms within City Hall that quite frankly, are still too small and would be too crowded to have a meeting in if, if you were planning to safely gather in accordance with some of the parameters recommended by Dr. Bond, such as maintaining safe distances, even while wearing masks. So I think that consistent with what some other localities are starting to think about doing, including Alamo County, which is going to begin at the top and, and phasing in meetings of its own governing body, I believe, starting in April. And sort of taking it slowly, trying to sort out how the, how and where these meetings can safely take place. And then getting started in a small measure. So we drafted this provision that would call for this safety plan as sort of a, a middle-of-the-road measure. We didn't have, again, specifics worked out with all of you in advance and haven't really had a chance. And during recent meetings, set aside time to do that. So this would, as I said, delegate the ability to one of you who will be unnamed other than to refer to you as mayor, to work out with the city manager what your safety plan might be if you're going to have an in-person meeting. So that's, that's that's the proposed ordinance in a nutshell. There are a number of provisions crossed out because Mr. Freeze came to you a couple of meetings ago with a new plan for outdoor cafes and fees and permits for those, so we no longer need those. And then in other specific locations within the ordinance, we've updated a number of, of dates that that need to be updated in order to enact this ordinance for an additional six-month period of time. And then finally, just for the members of the public, this ordinance is separate from documents that actually originally first declared the local state of emergency. And this document really just discusses how you're going to manage your, the business of your meetings while that state of emergency continues in effect. So if you want to conclude the emergency itself, there would need to be a separate city council vote and a determination that, you know, all of you feel that all the actions that can be done to address the requirements and the needs of the, the public health emergency have, have all been taken. So I have, be happy to answer any questions. I don't think I have any additional information wording of the ordinance to present.
So I just want to be clear, in my understanding, we would continue the state of emergency with the caveat in there that we are now looking towards a safety plan. Basically, this is allowing us to make the safety plan to be moving forward to, to at least some meetings to begin resuming in person in a safe way.
That's right.
Sense of, uh, even just a rough timeline of when a safety plan would be developed or a timeframe for when hybrid meetings could be possible.
I, I don't have a specific timeline. Mr. Rogers may, may be able to, to give you a rough outline.
We have started to look at what's returning to the council chamber would look like. And we're discussing that internally and looking at what provisions would have to be taken, safety provisions would have to be taken in order to make a safety plan work, and there are some estimates that we're waiting to get back. So I, I would say that probably in the next, the next two weeks, we should have the information that we need with respect to that and. uh, the information that we need with respect to that and and come back uh, to you with uh, with the plan.
In is, you know, the sense of when we will uh, be moving to any hybrid meetings either for ourselves or boards and commissions, is that tied to any metrics in stern in terms of percent positivity, the uh, hospital capacity, vaccination rate, or is it just gonna be determined from, you know, when we develop the plan and sort of just we'll decide from there when we want to move towards hybrid meetings?
We will, of course, keep uh, uh, our eye on um, the local health department of publications about state of things in in the community and and make judgments about that. But at the same time, um, uh, as I pointed out, there are some things we need to do with the facility if we're gonna use the council chamber or some other facility. And we looked at the city space today in terms of what that would look like and what the challenges are of of moving council to a a a different space. Uh, all of that has to be considered. And uh, so it's gonna gonna take uh, uh, like like I said, we're gonna try to get it done in in the next ten days. And in terms of the 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 metrics, in terms of uh, hospital admissions, et cetera, we'll keep an eye on that and be guided by what our local health director is saying and and directing toward us.
One of the things that I think is is kind of worth pointing out here is that the county is moving to uh, a situation where they will have more open meetings, particularly for the board of supervisors. But as I understand their proposal, it's gonna take, the meeting would take place in the Lane Auditorium. And on one half of the the auditorium, they would have basically, you know, the the people who wanna be masked, who want to observe social distancing and so on. On the other half of the auditorium, they would have the people who for whatever reason don't wanna wear masks and don't care about the social distancing. So at least the people who who have a legitimate concern uh, can take some action to to protect themselves. And they're not going to be kind of mixed in with the people who they might feel are endangering to them. That's not a perfect solution, but it's Lisa, uh, as I understand it, that's the way that they're that they're gonna try to address that issue. And part of our problem is that I don't know that we've got a space that is as large, I mean, unless we were to say, hey, we're gonna go do it at CHS in the auditorium or Walker or Buford or someplace like, I mean, there may be other places we could do it, but we haven't. We've looked at council chambers and perhaps city space. Uh, and that's the kind of decision-making that we need to to start working on.
Uh, uh, that that's right. I mean, we've we've uh, uh, what you just described, the county is doing, we don't really have that option in 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 the council chamber space because as we we uh, uh, looked at it, uh, there'd be very if you're observing social distancing in the six feet, uh, there would be probably no more, what did we say, Lisa, no more than twenty-five people, you know, in 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 the audience. And um, and and staff would not be present uh, in the room. So uh, separating people in terms of their choice of whether they're vaccinated or not, that would be uh, uh, that would be a limitation. Uh, we looked at city space, that's uh, it has some possibilities and staff is working with me on identifying what uh, what kind of numbers we could we could get there. Uh, but you mentioned, you know, a larger auditorium. Uh, certainly, uh, that's worth uh, worth considering. Uh, and uh, we will, we will look into that and um, and come back uh, with the the information on that as well. Yep.
So if I could just. Yeah, so if I could just make sure I've got all this in my head, um, Ms. Robertson. So the emergency declaration is still in place. And the document that we're looking at now is the continuity of government. And it's been and uh, resolution has been amended a number of times. And now we're amending it again with this uh, I think you call it paragraph three or whatever, the bottom of page one hundred, that is going to give us the flexibility to 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 basically ask staff to give us some options of places to be that would meet some criteria in terms of safety. Is that correct? Okay, and then um, Dr. Bonds sent a really helpful email out. I guess everyone saw that. That was pretty sobering, I guess, in terms of when we could get back into a space the size of city hall, see the council chambers. Uh, it was in terms of metrics, it was pretty specific about things that she would recommend. Um, and so I'm I'm assuming that will be part of the guidance that was discussed.
We look at that, yes.
I can tell you that if if we end up with some system that involves me having some role in it, I am absolutely gonna be going by the guidance I get from Dr. Bonds and
Right.
company.
Yeah. So um, I I just had one question. I know that at one point going hybrid was not ideal because we didn't have the capacity with staff and things like that. So has that been addressed? I mean, like if we decide to do this and let's say our April meeting, um, you know, next month will be um, in city hall and one or two of us decide that we are not comfortable and we want to do it from home. Um, and so there would have to be, you know, some type of setup and for that, are we able to accommodate that at this point?
So that's part of what we have to look at for the spaces that are available. Um, there are some trade-offs. So we we believe that um, we have the equipment and the staff for the most part to do a hybrid meeting either in city council chambers or possibly also in city space. But if we were to look at a different space altogether, such as using an auditorium in someone else's building, uh, like the school or something, uh, we don't know whether or not, uh, or most likely we wouldn't have the equipment that we need to do um, a hybrid meeting in those spaces. So in the places where you might be able to accommodate a larger number of people who would like to come see you in person, we will have a lower ability to do a hybrid meeting.
Yeah. And 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 if we, let me say, Lisa, I mean, you can um, we can investigate uh, additional equipment uh, that we could use to facilitate that hybrid meeting, but we have to look at the cost. Cost of doing that, but it's 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 a way to do it. Uh, if we're doing it off-site, but um, it will cost us additional and we have to see who could do it for.
Yeah.
And there, if your question was focused on staffing, the issue is how many meetings our communication staff would need to run. Currently, they are a mighty staff of three. When we hire our director, there'll be a mighty staff of four. And so I believe that should council want their meeting to be hybrid in chambers, that would be doable. But when we get to all of the other boards and commissions, that's when it gets a little tricky. Not only with staffing, but with the capacity of the technology.
Right, I understand.
Didn't we allocate CARES Act money for technology to do hybrid meetings?
Yes, sir, we did. That's what's in council chambers and city space.
Well, I know I've shared it before, but I'll Just share again, you know, I my my concern is just that there's no clear sense of timeline or metrics when we'll start hybrid meetings. Um, UVA has completely returned to in-person, loosened their mask mandate. I can walk into any restaurant or bar without a mask. Um, so from the purpose of community spread, I'm not sure what we're accomplishing by not moving to hybrid. Saying that, you know, I think clearly we need to move towards a hybrid model and follow safety precautions. But I do think, um, you know, I really think we need to be moving towards hybrid meetings sooner rather than later, given how many other peer localities have already been doing it for months. Um, the state of where other things are, and I think it does have um, a meaningful impact on reducing some members of the public ability to participate as well as our ability to be able to deliberate. Um, and again, I know that there are challenges, but I do feel like they're solvable challenges to move towards hybrid meetings. And I I I don't think this is anyone's intention, um, but you know, my concern is just without clear timelines or metrics for when we'll start, it's just by the natural inertia, easy to just keep staying here and not moving forward with it because um, virtual meetings in some ways are convenient. Um, so that that's my only concern. Um, is is a lack of a sense of timeline or when we will actually be moving forward towards again, hybrid meetings where you can still participate electronically and you have safety precautions, but you're allowing that option for the public.
Well, I guess if we vote for this resolution, that at least gives us the the freedom to actually start planning in those ways uh, for two or three types of meeting. Our meeting, planning commission meeting, I think it was another one. Um, and I agree, I think that we should I I agree in terms of timeline and metrics. I think that the thing for me that's tricky now, particularly after reading that email from Dr. Bonds, is the the metrics or the timeline can be shifted due to the metrics we pick. Because we may think everything, you may have a a decent sort of schedule or plan and we've told people, okay, this is the obje- objective we wanna march towards. But her email is very detailed about all the different, you know, factors that she also mentioned in her earlier presentation. And so uh, I think that's gonna be the trick. If we can set up something that's flexible enough to let us move through this time period, uh, while also in in terms of the technology and the spaces, while also just being cognizant of, you know, something may happen at the hospital and they're full up on bed capacity, so we choose not to meet a week, you know. But at least if we approve this this resolution before it's now, we can start formally the process. If I understand that correctly. Would you entertain a motion?
A motion is always in order.
See if I can find it. This amazing document.
And of course, when a motion is made and then seconded, that's actually when the discussion is supposed to begin.
Yes, the motion on page ninety-six.
I see that. Uh, I move to approve the ordinance amending and reenacting the city council's continuity of government ordinance for a six-month period beginning March eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion. Or are people discussed out?
We're disgusted, disgusting, sorry.
Oh, let let me just say, because this
We're discussed out.
Uh, this ordinance would result in uh, some delegation of authority basically to to me and to the city manager to to try to figure this out. My my overall attitude is that I would like to see us open as much as we reasonably can with reasonable safety. And this is gonna sound utterly lawyerly, but with also reasonable safeguards available to folks who have different medical needs. And I'm conscious of the fact that there are a number of people who are involved in public discourse who have different medical needs and different medical sensitivities. And who, for whatever reason, would have a great deal of discomfort associated with coming back to a full in-person kind of meeting. Uh, and I don't want to be so um, so gung-ho on getting back to everything happening in person that I want to trample on the legitimate concerns of folks who have different medical needs. So if we can figure out a way to accommodate people who, for whatever reason, are nervous about being in a crowd these days, and let's face it, two years ago, nobody was nervous about crowds, and now everybody's nervous about crowds. And we've been nervous for the last two years. And it may take a while for people to get over that. Uh, that doesn't mean we just say, oh, stop being silly. And now let's go ahead and have everything wide open again. We have to acknowledge that that folks are coming to this from a different place. Uh, and if we can figure out a way to do a hybrid, both in terms of the public being able to comment and in terms of our staff perhaps, or even um, those among us who may feel a a sense of of discomfort with with a particular physical arrangement. I, whether you wanna call it a hybrid model, or I mean, I don't know what language you wanna use to it, but that's the sort of thing that that we would figure out as we go along. And I'll just tell you that my my general attitude is I want it to be as open as we reasonably can make it, but as protective as we reasonably can make it. And if we're those who are in tension, I understand that. But I'll be conscious of both of both of those pieces of the tension.
And we really are fortunate to have Doc, we really are fortunate to have Dr. Bonds and her insight.
Yeah.
I would just say I would agree with that, which I think is why the the hybrid approach where people have the option to participate virtually is so important. Um, and again, final thing I would just say, you know, I think to the extent it's possible, I think it will, I think it will be important to try to have at least some of our budget work sessions be hybrid meetings. Um, you know, we may have some more flexibility in meeting space, but you know, I continue to talk to um, people who find the virtual meetings a barrier for participation. Um, and I know we have lots of important meetings. Um, and that said, I think that is why the the hybrid approach. I hope we can move towards sooner rather than later because for those who have medical conditions are uncomfortable, you still will not have to attend in person.
And and we have to recognize, of course, that by doing a hybrid kind of model, that puts more burden on city staff than, as I understand it, puts more burden than either an entirely in-person or an entirely virtual. And we've gotta recognize that that's gonna be the consequence. And we're gonna have to try to make sure we don't burn out Mr. Dill Hunt and his colleagues.
We will, we'll take a good look at that. And and like I said, I'm 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 thinking that um, uh, there are resources out there. You have to pay for them. I don't know how much that could facilitate uh, and and augment uh, the communication staff and what they do. And make it easier for them. So we're not, you know, overburdening uh, the staff we have, but uh, taking advantage of other expertise that has equipment that can facilitate uh, these hybrid meetings. So uh, we'll take a good look at that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Are we ready for a vote? Ms. Thomas?
Councilor McGill?
Yes.
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes five nothing. Uh, the next item on the agenda, general business, there are no items of general business that I'm aware of. Any other business items for consideration? Counselors, is there anything we wanna ask the city management to follow up on?
Seeing them in a few hours, I guess, you know, next.
It's not like we're gonna be far away from them for very long.
Right.
Okay, well, in that case, community matters. We're now at the final speaking opportunity for members. Uh, the public speakers will be given up to three minutes. You may join the speaker queue by selecting the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar or by pressing star nine if you've joined by phone. Do I recall that at the last meeting, we decided that Do I recall that at the last meeting, we decided that we were going to limit this. Uh, to people who did not speak the first time?
No, that was taken out.
That was taken out, okay. Uh, back and forth on that one. Okay, so any anybody can speak, that's fine. Are there any speakers?
Mayor Snook, our first hand raised is Gregory Weaver. Right, you have three minutes with council.
Hi, City Council, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm sorry if I'm going to meander a bit. I don't have anything prepared, but. I just wanted to um emphasize the importance of um. In including CATS, um, you know, vision for fifteen-minute service and funding that um in the budget. Um, I think it's critical that um, you know, we fund collective bargaining for um. For cat drivers and for, you know, other city employees um and fully fund um all of our affordable housing initiatives. And alongside that also um, provide the funding necessary to get to that fifteen-minute service. And you know, those things are related. Um, when we talk about um affordable housing in the city and affordable living. Uh, we also need to have um, you know, transform the city to be a place where we can, you know, um. We have the infrastructure that makes it possible for folks to get around. You know, one of the most expensive expenditures for uh households. Um, or for families, aside from, you know, the living, their living expenses is um their transportation expenses. So um if we fully fund affordable housing but don't have um the infrastructure necessary for folks to get around the city. Then I think we're doing a great disservice and um, you know, not doing all we can for our most vulnerable um, community members. Um, and you know, I also think that um. You know, alongside uh funding um transit in that way, we also need to make sure that the. The rest of the city um infrastructure is transformed um as well to towards bikeability and walkability. So making sure that all of that is in the plan and I know that um it's critically important um for this budget cycle because we're, you know. Determining the next ten years of funding. If we don't start uh towards that transformation now, my fear is that um. We're never really going to get there. Um, and every year that we don't fund uh transit. Um, our carbon footprint and our um is is just going to get worse in the city. Um, you know. You hear from the community um a lot, you we talked, uh, there's a lot of talk about tonight about um needing to work towards that climate action plan. Um, it's absolutely imperative to um to include CAT and transit and um. Sustainable uh transportation in that. So I look forward to uh to having something a little more prepared for you in uh future meetings. But um please keep that in mind um this week and as you're working on the budget. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
There are ten other members in the attendees list at the moment. No hands raised though, so this would be the last opportunity for folks to raise their hand. And get in this uh section of public comment. I see no additional hands raised.
Well, in that case, folks, I think we're uh we're done for the evening. Thank you all so much. It was a, I think, a pretty productive meeting. So we're adjourned. Till the next time.
Good night.
Good night.
See you Thursday.